Good afternoon. The April 25th, 2023 Board Work Session is now in order. Paul, roll call please.
Mr. Seuss.
Here.
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Trent.
Here.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Jenkins.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first topic is Board Member District Boundary Adjustments. Board Members, I would say we got a huge agenda, so if we can, you'll see me moving pretty quickly. If we can go with that, it'd be great. Everybody good? All right. Sarah Lee.
Yes, let me introduce Sarah Lee Morrissey. Sarah is with Sarah Lee Morrissey Consulting, and she is working with WXYZ, our, I'm sorry, WXY. I knew I was gonna do that.
I'm on it, I hear ya.
Our planning consultant firm, and they are going to give you kind of a snapshot of what they heard regarding Board Member Redistricting as a prelude for the Board's discussion as to where we go from here. So, Sarah Lee, I will turn it over to you.
All right, thank you very much, Sue. It's a pleasure to be here, Board Members. I'm Sarah Lee Morrissey. I am your neighbor. I live right up the street in Volusia, so I'm happy to be here in person. And yes, Z does follow WXY, but not in their company name. And so with me this afternoon is, are my colleagues Raphael Lauth and also Adam Lubinski is also with us, although I may need somebody. We have to admit. There he is, all right. Okay, so. Give me just a second to get this. There we go. And, okay. All right. So, based on the direction that Ms. Hahn received from you at your March 22nd meeting, she enlisted the assistance of WXY, who is an annual planning consultant with you, and asked or authorized WXY and myself to proceed to have conversations with each of you about Board Redistricting and to also speak with the Supervisor of Elections, come forward with our findings, and hopefully have some discussion today that gives further direction on how you want to move forward. So today's agenda is relatively short, and as you know, that I will go through each of these items with you and start off with just summarizing that my colleague Raphael and I were able to meet, or rather speak with each of you, some by phone, some by Zoom, but we were able to have conversation. And then I was also able to have a conversation with Brevard Supervisor of Election, Mr. Tim Bobanek. And in each of our conversations with Board Members, we focused a series of questions on three subject areas: each member's district, specific district, redistricting approach, criteria, and then lastly, public engagement. And as you might expect, because I know you've talked about this before, everyone raised different concerns, and particularly when we're talking about individual Board Members' districts, there's some unique concerns and/or characteristics of your districts which we heard about, and then we discussed different criteria, and as you would expect, different emphasis is placed on different criteria by each Board Member. So let's take a few minutes, if we can, to talk about redistricting criteria, and also included in this table are some engagement options, and as we move through the presentation, we'll talk a little bit more about engagement options. And I want to make clear, we did not ask any Board Member to place a priority on criteria. What you see here in this table is a summary of what we heard in speaking to Board Members in terms of whether a Board Member felt strongly about something, or perhaps a particular issue was not even raised by a Board Member. So you may not see a sum of five as you go across each of these criteria, and that would be because perhaps that particular criteria was just not brought up in conversation. So, no surprise to, I think, any of you, there's not a lot of agreement, but I am very happy to say we were able to find one criteria of which everyone agreed on, and that is that no one's ready to move forward with seven Board Members. So I took that as a positive sign. There was also, not really referenced here, but when we spoke about to what every Board Member acknowledged and understood, that balancing overall population is the minimum legal criteria. So I would say that was a point of agreement as well, and then because a lot of work has already been done at the County Commission, and you've seen in Sue's presentation at your March meeting where that deviation fell for the County Commission, which is right hovering at eight and a half percent, that there was some general consensus that that is a reasonable deviation as you move forward. And I know that you've had discussion and direction that it needs to come under 10%, and you're now over 10%. There were some other common threads, while not necessarily everyone in agreement, or the degree of which a Board Member felt something was important or not important at all, but there were some common threads, as I think you would expect, and some of those have to do with the distribution of students and also the number of schools across Board Members' districts, diversity within the population and how it portrays itself across each of your districts. Obviously, there is consensus from a few of you about County Commission boundaries, and also some discussion about communities in general. When we move into discussing public engagement, there's some level of agreement that the degree to which you move forward with something beyond a Board Meeting where the public is invited to speak is just part of your normal course of business. I would say that to the degree those of you felt public engagement was important, you did not think in person necessarily was necessary, and that virtual could easily accommodate public engagement, and we can talk a little bit more about that. I think what we need to talk about in a little bit of detail is the discussion about County Commission boundaries, because that, as you all know, there are several of you that have, that do consider that as a strong priority. However, that as a priority does compete or conflict with some of the other priorities that we heard about. So, for instance, moving towards school Board Member districts matching the County Commission boundaries, it does exacerbate the imbalance across Board Member districts for number of schools. So if you're trying to have a somewhat equal distribution or equal, as close as you can get to equal distribution, that imbalance does become greater under County Commission boundaries. Right now, under your current boundaries, you have, the smallest number of schools is 15 in one district, and the greater number is 19. And so the delta across all the districts is either one, two, three, or four. If you move forward with County Commission boundaries, that delta is greater, and that deviation between the smallest and the largest is much greater. The smallest district would have 12 schools, the largest district would have 21, and that delta across districts is either one, five, or nine.
Ms. Sarah Lee, you had mentioned this based upon the physical location and address, correct? Not on the, not on the physical location of students.
That is correct. That's strictly school location.
So in many of our districts, regardless of where they're drawn, students are in our district that go to another school. It's just you're talking about physical differences.
Correct.
Okay.
We did, we did, in terms of possible criteria, both students was mentioned, as well as student attendance boundaries, and I think part of that is recognizing that distinction between a school may be in an individual Board Members' district, however, all of the children who are within that attendance boundary may or may not be in that particular Board Members' district.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah.
And I would, I would also say that everyone recognizes that they serve everyone in your county. I think the issue of number of schools specifically comes down to when a Board Member wants to get to know their particular school community better, closer, visit the school, get to know the faculty, the administration, the families, it does become more difficult, the larger your district is geographically and/or the larger number of schools that you have, to make regular visits in the course of a year. So one of the other areas where there is some conflicting priorities between the County Commission boundaries is the discussion that we had with some Board Members about the number of people impacted in moving forward, and that did have some relationship to the discussion about public engagement. So one of the other areas where there is some conflicting priorities between the County Commission boundaries is the discussion that we had with some Board Members about the number of people impacted in moving forward, and that did have some relationship to the discussion about public engagement.
Ms. Sarah Lee, I would, I would go back to where it says one member remains a Board Member until 2026 but resides out of the district. I think the proposal that had the County Commission seat put District Five with that district, so they would actually have a district. I'm not sure if you saw that. One of your bullet points inside the presentation is wrapped around a person being outside of their district, but in fact, it drew the district with them in it. They would have a district.
The intention with this statement, it was, from the map that we saw, the Board Member currently in District Three would no longer be in District Three if you adopt County Commission, and the Board Member that is in District Five would not be in District Five if you adopt County Commission boundaries.
They would remain in District Five, it would just be that their house is, like, if you draw the County Commission straight, which was the current one, then that section of where that individual is at would not be inside of it, but we had already prepared to add that person to that district. Does that make sense?
No, we haven't prepared anything. Her statement is absolutely accurate. It says resides.
Ms. Campbell, Ms. Campbell, I, I, we did have a presentation that put that piece inside of us. I would just, I would like to give a second. No, 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 we made a presentation that included, there is a document that came out that showed that. That's all I'm referring to. That's all I'm referring to.
Are you talking about the maps or the map?
Yeah, no, 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 Ms. Hand.
Sorry.
We had a presentation earlier that put, where we took and carved out so that this all could happen, there would be a district that Ms. Campbell would have. That district is, it's not like she doesn't have a district, it's not like she's just floating out there, there's a literal district that she would be representing.
You can't just represent.
Hang on, Ms., just hang on.
If I understood correctly from Mr. Gibbs' memo that Ms. Campbell would remain in her district, and the boundary adjustment would be timed such that Ms. Campbell was not, Ms. Campbell remained in her district during her term of office, that's what I understood.
Right, and that, and in order to do that, that just needed to have a little carve-out along there to add her neighborhood to it, is what it was.
I think we were talking about effective dates of, Mr. Gibbs, perhaps you can.
Just to clarify, it's not a drawing of the line, if you adopt the county lines, they would be the county lines right now, it's just Ms. Campbell would get to finish her term with District Five, and then at the conclusion of her term, she could not run for District Five anymore, she would have to run for her new district. And Ms. Jenkins would continue to represent District Three until her term runs, and then she would have to run for District Four.
So, part of the presentation had showed, and I had had conversations with the Supervisor of Elections, that where Ms. Campbell, which I think I've heard that both Ms. Campbell and Ms. Jenkins have mentioned that you guys may not be running again, so that's kind of like a moot point, but the thing is, is that both in, that you would take that neighborhood, draw it into Five until after that individual was no longer present, and then move that in. That's in a presentation that I have somewhere.
We have, we have, I will.
There has been a presentation that had that inside of it.
Well, it was not a presentation that was ever given to this Board in a public manner, and I will tell you, I will tell you right now.
No, I would, I would be careful at saying something that I know to be true, Ms. Campbell, is that our staff presented that piece, so that's okay. It's, it may have been a while ago when it was, but that's what the original presentation was, so.
That presentation, that statement, that idea was never presented to this Board, and I, you don't want me to challenge you. Ms. Ms. Seuss, I'd like to finish. There's not been a conversation, there's not been a conversation about a carve-out, and about my neighborhood, my neighborhood, because I will tell you, my precinct is the second-largest precinct in the entire. Because I will tell you, my precinct is the second-largest precinct in the entire, in the entire county. It's got 12,000 voters in it. And if you move my precinct into any other precinct, you just threw off the whole, whole entire percentage.
Nobody said, just now, that you would be, that that would be the way it is. There was another option that gave it to where you would have a, nobody's taking an entire precinct and moving it into somewhere else. Your precinct is larger than your neighborhood, Ms. Campbell. I would say with this, for the presence of it, that there is an option that makes it to where you have a district until you decide not to run.
We've already talked about that. The possibility legally, if we do.
That is completely, it is legal.
If we adopt, right, but that's not, we talked about my neighborhood. But the statement that she put here is correct.
No.
The present, you, you were doubting the veracity of her statement, which is, "One board member," which would be me, "remains a board member until 2026 but resides out of district. If we adopt the county commission lines, I will, for three and a half years, be residing outside of District 5." Regardless of, you can't just move a neighborhood and say, for this.
Yes, you can.
I'm just not going to continue to argue with you.
Yes, you can. So there was two options on the table. You could do it that way, or you could take a neighborhood and carve it out and put it there. That's it. That's all I wanted to say. And that is in documents that we did receive, because I think that was part of the conversation. And I had the conversation with the supervisor of elections, and it is completely legal.
I've also had a conversation with the supervisor of elections.
I understand.
That is not what he said to me.
Well, what I talked to about the supervisor and what you talked to, I hope would be two separate things, but it is legal to do. And he said that as soon as, what the corrective action would be, she could have that district. And then as soon as that, her, she is not going to run, or she is no longer on the ballot, you can readjust it, or you can keep it the same way. It's not a big deal. That's all.
Okay, my turn. So I'm going to go ahead and back up Ms. Campbell's claims. Maps in which there was a carve-out for Ms. Campbell were not presented to the board. I also find it interesting that there would be a map that carves out Ms. Campbell and not Ms. Jenkins. That doesn't make any sense. And as well, no, you cannot draw out Ms. Campbell's neighborhood, because then you would be causing the problems you claim you're trying to avoid with the supervisor of elections. You have to carve out the entire precinct. Otherwise, you're going to create new problems for the supervisor of elections. The point that I was told, or that was presented to this board, the reason we wanted to adopt the county commission lines was to reduce voter confusion. So if we adopt the lines but then deviate them slightly, we're not reducing voter confusion. We'll still have the same exact voter confusion.
So I think the confusion that you may have is, is that you and I are up for election, right? So that, our districts can align, because then we are in the same election. But Ms. Campbell needed that extra time. So when I spoke to the supervisor of elections, he stated that this was an option. That's all. So I just didn't want it to be that this is the reason that you can't go this route or anything like that. That's all.
I'm not, I'm not continuing.
That's it. I'm allowed to say with the conversation I had with the supervisor, and that's what it is.
We heard you, Mr. Susan, but I'm, I'm not confused. I'm not confused at all. Because it wouldn't make sense why you would carve out one board member and not another. I don't want to be carved out. I'm not advocating for that. But the fact that you're having that conversation is very odd. So no, I'm not confused, but it wasn't something that was presented to the board.
Okay. All right, Ms. Jenkins. The floor is yours, Ms. Sarah Lee.
Okay, thank you. And I think, as we move towards the end of the presentation, and we talk about possible scopes, I believe that your suggestion, Mr. Chair, comes into play. This slide is intended to discuss solely an exact adoption of the county commission boundaries as they exist today.
Good point.
And what potential implications would be. And I just call your attention to this map that is on this slide. You know, I think, you know, down here in Florida, I think part of the confusion we run into with our constituents is many have not been born and raised in Florida, and in fact, have come to us from somewhere else, often up north, and they are not used to having a, an autonomous school board and an autonomous county council. They're actually used to their town, their community, having authority over their schools. And so, I think part of the confusion we all run into when we're speaking with constituencies, they, they are surprised that the school board is an autonomous entity here in Florida with its own operation. And then certainly, when they're looking at a voter ID card, and it says, "County Commission, District 3, School Board Commission, District 4," or whatever, you know, it is a reasonable question in their mind, why are they not the same? If they're both the whole county, why are they not the same? I will say, you are not the only district slash county that does not match your school board seats with your county commission seats. We did not do a survey of everyone, but I know, just as a matter of my own experience working on this issue with, with others, that they may not have matched historically, or they may have matched historically, and they do not now. And for whatever reason, it's often because the school board, reasonably so, is concerned about different issues than the county commission. They may oftentimes work on issues together, but your first and foremost obligation is to the operation of your schools. And we all know that our schools come in very, very helpful to the county when there's storms, and that there's often a lot of other issues we work on together. But it is not unusual for them not to match, and/or for you to decide to match them, and/or later choose not to. I think the areas that you can see on this map are the areas that would be impacted if you decide to go to a straight county commission boundary adoption. These are the geographic areas where people will be impacted in speaking with Mr. Babanik about that. Right now, Brevard has in excess of 460,000 registered voters. Unfortunately, we know that not everybody votes. There's somewhere in the neighborhood of 100,000 voters in these different colored So let's talk a little bit about our conversation with the supervisor of elections, and I want to make sure I clarify, especially this first and second bullet. This first bullet is actually speaking to what if you decide to adopt the county commission boundaries to be your school board seats. If you do that, you do reduce the number of ballot types. You don't necessarily change the number of ballots, because whatever your number of voters are, each voter has to have a ballot. But this, this bullet is speaking specifically to if you choose to adopt county commission boundaries. If you choose to adopt some other variation, and we don't know what that would be, the number of ballot types may go up, probably wouldn't go down, may go up a lot, may not go up a lot. That is when this issue of looking at the precincts, and if moving a whole precinct is not possible, a precinct may be too large, then, again, in conversation with Mr. Babanik, at the very least, do not take any geographic unit that is smaller than the census block as determined by the U.S. Census. So there's different issues that are raised, depending on, you know, how you decide to look at your boundaries. Certainly, if, if we become engaged with you to move this forward in whatever manner is decided, we would be working closely with the supervisor of election on whatever scenarios were created, because it is important to try and keep things as, as, as simple as possible, whether we're looking at the shapes of the districts, or whether we're looking at where people are voting and the formation of precincts. The supervisor of election is required to send out voter cards after you adopt whatever you choose to adopt. He will have to send out new voter cards to any voter that is affected. So meaning, if, if a current voter stays in District 1 and his or her, nothing has changed. That particular voter does not need a card. But if a voter is reassigned to a different district, then that voter would have to get a card. And again, he, they, their office, they have some good staff, they review their precincts and their data regularly, and certainly, if we were part of your team moving forward, we would be continuing to have conversation and work with Mr. Babanik and his staff. Lastly, before we move into some conversation about potential scopes, wanted to just talk about public engagement. And many of you said an extensive process is not necessary, but again, some competing priorities. You know, if we're going to impact a lot of people, then the need for engagement becomes greater. If, what form that engagement takes, recognizing this work is going to happen quickly and over the summer. So being able to reach out to people through their schools is not necessarily an option, and people will be away, as people normally are during the summer. We did speak with each of you about a web tool that WXY has used in other redistricting exercises, not specifically school board redistricting, but I know you're very familiar with attendance boundaries. And that web tool is able to be made accessible virtually for people to comment on and/or to conduct some virtual meetings. So, again, the whole discussion about public engagement, the level to which any one of you were interested in it, kind of corresponded to other concerns that you may or may not have, have raised. At this point, I am going to turn the next two slides over to Adam and Raphael to talk to you about potential scopes, should you decide that you want to do something beyond just adopting county commission boundaries.
Super, thank you, Sarah Lee. So, we've put together two scope options based on what we heard. The, both scopes recommend an analysis of the county commission boundaries, and a first scenario, which explores the minimum number of changes to your existing school board boundaries that you might need to make in order populations. And that would be to minimally balance the populations to get under that 10% threshold. The analysis of the county commission boundaries would be purely to calculate the same set of metrics that we'd be calculating for the county commission boundaries, so that in effect, you'd be able to compare apples to apples, the county commission boundaries against the scenario one boundaries. Under option two, we recommend exploring a second scenario. And this is really a much more open-ended scenario, where we could explore different member priorities and make more significant boundary changes. And so if you're interested in this, we haven't prescribed or recommended an approach for the second scenario, but that would be determined based on additional board input. In both scenarios, we recommend a board workshop and a round of boundary edits following the board workshop. And that would lead to a final set of scenario boundary recommendations. We recommend different levels of engagement under the two scopes. In both scopes, we recommend an interactive mapping tool. However, only in option two are we recommending virtual meetings based on your. And then both options include reporting, and that's just a final report, as well as a summary of the engagement. The engagement summary would be different in the two options. So in the first option, it would just be a set of metrics, who submitted a survey on the interactive tool, who put a comment on the map, what was the web traffic like. Under option two, it would include all of that website data, in addition to data collected at the meetings. Because option one is less work overall, the fee is lower, and the timeline is shorter. And so, we believe that rounding out the analysis by the end of June would be appropriate, leaving plenty of time ahead of August 22nd, which, as I understand, is the latest possible date that boundaries can be adopted to go into effect for the next election. Option, in terms of timeline, we think that it's reasonable to complete all of the option two tasks by the end of July this summer, with the same note later than date. And then the fee amounts are different, and based at the bottom there. I want to note that these are just two sets of options we've put together. We can sort of mix and match tasks as necessary if the board is interested, and can provide updated estimates based on the different configurations by post. So just quickly touching on the timeline again, before kicking it off to Q and A. So we recommend, under both options, to complete the redistricting analysis in May. The board workshop would then take place at one of the listed dates. The round of modifications, if needed, would take place after that board workshop. We're recommending that engagement take place in June and/or July, depending on the amount of engagement done under, or of the board would want to proceed on engagement. We're recommending that the initial scenario is published to the web tool for public comments, so that the board would then have access to public comments as they're at their board workshop. Following the board workshop and the round of edits, that revised scenario, if the scenario is revised, would then be re-uploaded to the web tool, and members of the public would be able to leave comments on that updated scenario. And under option two, in the time, we would additionally be conducting virtual meetings. And then finally, the final redistricting and engagement memo, once the redistricting and engagement tasks are complete. Thank you. I'll pass it back to Sarah Lee.
That concludes the information that we've put together for your consideration. And obviously, if, if you need any elaboration or answering any questions during your discussion, we're, we're here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think you guys did a great presentations. Thank you so much for that. With that, are there any board members that wish to discuss any of this? I, I do know that one of the things that would help with whether we went with the county commission or not, I spent a lot of time looking at our current ones and the county commission ones, and if you do it by population, there's schools like McNair, Saturn, Gulfview, that are physical locations in one, but the majority of students may be in the other. So you may be. So you may be able to say, in order to equal it out, you can take those schools and regardless of if we went with the county commission or not, the population inhibits you to do that. Like for me, there's a lot of kids that are in my district that go to Anderson, but I think that it's in your district, right? So it's, there's like that whole dynamic, right? So there's, the way to levelize all of the schools is in some cases, and I went across, and it's probably three or four that we would have to do that on, but the majority of them would fall into the districts that we have currently. I just wanted to kind of mention that as we were moving forward, but you guys want to start the conversations? Any kind of the direction or anything like that?
I'll, I'll start the conversation. So this is, um, redistricting is obviously one of those topics that people feel differently and different passions about this because it impacts us all differently. Uh, and it's one of those challenging things that we have to, to take on because statute says that we have to do this. One of the other things to take in consideration, which I hope maybe our legislators will look at this in the future, but, uh, our districts, based on the number of voters, doesn't necessarily correlate to the number of students. So when you have a retirement community that's in a district, now that number goes up. And so I understand the complexity of this. This is, it's a complicated issue. To me, I've said this since day one, I really feel like adopting the county commissions is the same, uh, we should keep it the same, uh, just for simplicity of voters. That's what I've said since day one. I understand it poses challenges to really three of you guys. I don't think, well, no, actually everyone except for mine. Mine's the only district I think that doesn't really get impacted by this change too much. So that's where I stand on this. I don't know where you guys stand on this, but I guess that's what we will discuss at Don't everybody all jump at once.
I always go first, so I don't want to go first.
All right. Um, yeah, I, I think it's, um, well, thank you very much for doing what you did, taking the time and, and, uh, how to wrap that up to say that we all are independently thinking about this. You said that nicely. Same here. I've said it from the very beginning. Don't want to reinvent the wheel. There are going to be positives and negatives. We could sit here for, for many, many months coming up with, uh, scenarios and, you know, a couple of years from now, I, I don't think we're going to look back and, um, say, I wish we would have did the boundaries in a different way. I mean, when we're all off the board, it'll just be new people and, uh, regardless where we live. So, uh, I'm with Megan on this. I, I'm just, uh, I just, I'm just, I don't want to spend any, any of the district's money if we don't have to. And, uh, you know, I'm all for the, uh, the county commission boundaries. They've already taken the time and the effort and spent the money. So that's where I've been since day one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Ms. Jenkins.
So you're right. It's not about the board members individually because they aren't permanent. But it is about our students, our staff and the communities in which we represent. And adopting the county commission map doesn't make that a priority. Uh, it's clear. It's evident. When one district will have 21 schools, seven of which are secondary schools, and another district would be left with 12. That's not in the best interest of students and staff. I have the least amount of, um, personal buy-in for this conversation because whether or not we adopt the county commission or completely redraw this map, the likelihood of me staying in District Three is basically impossible. So my perspective is completely unselfish. Um, I believe it's our role and responsibility to do what's best for our students, our staff and the communities that we serve. What I've found interesting from day one of this conversation is that we forget the part where the county commissioners had the opportunity and the authority to draw the maps in which we're looking at right now. And so essentially by adopting their maps, you're relinquishing your control and your responsibility and authority that you were given by the voters who voted you in to make that decision. I'm not comfortable with that either. Their role and responsibility is very different than ours. The reason they drew their maps was for their own purposes and their roles in representing the counties and the areas that they were voted into. So that makes no sense to me. Personally, I think that if we're going to redraw the map, it needs to have significant changes to it. Districts three, four and five are way larger than one and two. Districts four and five are proposed to continue to grow. There's no reason to not look at this completely differently. Again, an unselfish conversation because I will very much be drawn out of my district. I think disenfranchising 100,000 voters to not be able to vote in the next election that they were expecting to vote in, um, is unfortunate. Um, I think, I'm just going to tell it like it is. I think having a conversation in the beginning of this where we talk about cutting in one board member and not another just shows where your priorities lie. If you adopt those county commission maps, I, I hope you expect to have a very packed room of angry people. Cause that's what's going to happen. Because you're not representing the constituents within the, within the entire county. Um, I think it's a self-serving decision. I'm completely against it. Again, I have no personal buy-in. Quite frankly, I would love to be in another district to vote against somebody. I think this is just, I think this is foolish. I think we're relinquishing our role and responsibility and I don't think we're doing what's in the best interest of our students and our staff.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Ms. Campbell?
Sure. I've got a couple of questions before I make my comments. Um, I have, on the slide, hmm, I guess it's the last slide with the information. There was a, and on the timeline, there was mention of adopting the resolution no later than August 22nd. Is there, I know in my conversation with you, I, I had shared my personal feelings as I want to go ahead and get this done by the CIMR for potential candidates, just out of fairness, because that gives them exactly one year before their election. So I didn't know if that was what the thought, because I don't think we're, I think our actual statutory limitations are this calendar year, odd, odd year. Is that, that's correct, right? Okay. So it's not necessarily, the adoption of the resolution by August 22nd is not necessarily a mandate, it's just a, a goal.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. And then I, you know, so just sharing different thoughts, you'd said something about, um, in the conversation with Mr. Bobanik, uh, about the new voter cards. I don't know about the rest of the board members, but I get a new voter registration card every single year, regardless of anything changes or not. They just send them out fresh and new every year and I cut it out, put it in my wallet, throw the other one away. Um, it's just something that they have done routinely unless they're making a change. I think they do that all the time. I also wonder, I, personally, my preference between the two options would be option one. Um, I, you know, it, it is $17,000 difference, but it is $17,000. And I think that we could, you know, looking at, it gets the job done. The things that it doesn't do is the more significant boundary changes. I disagree, Ms. Jenkins respectfully, with the making bigger changes because I, my priority is for us to make as few changes as possible, and I'll go on with that in just a minute. Um, and then I, I like, I like that we have interactive, interactive mapping tool, but I think what we miss in having the virtual meetings, I think that is something we could do in-house if we had to, maybe not with the same level of expertise, but we could facilitate something like that if we, you know, if we were in a type. So I, I'll be quite honest with you guys. It, the only, there's only one board member, because we had this conversation two years ago, that it was absolutely clear that from day one that this was his position because he's been very clear from day one. But I'll be honest, I have yet to hear a really solid reason for making this drastic change. This is a drastic change. The people, the only people who I've ever heard complain, and I, you know, I've just been on the board for four and a half years, ran two campaigns. The only people who I ever hear complain about us not being aligned are people from Breck. And, you know, for people who are actively campaigning, because most of the people, that's the Brevard Republican Executive Committee, for those who are not aware of our political terminology, that, and not even all of them. And when they've said, why can't it be, it would be easier for campaigning, it would be easier. But that's not our goal is to make it easier for campaigning. Our, I don't, you know, even if we have different goals, I don't think that, I haven't heard that spoken as any of our goals. And when I have shared with them what it would mean as far as the number of voters who would not get to vote in the next election, who thought they were going to, being 42,000, it wasn't 100,000, it was, it's a total number of disruption, but it's only 42,000 that would not get to vote in the next election, um, who were supposed to, you know, if we had not made any changes. That, that makes a difference to them. And it makes a difference to me. And I, I do have a problem. I mean, I, I know Mr. Gibbs, I'm going to trust him. I know he's shared us with that, you know, that we can do, we can draw the lines and draw the lines with me outside District Five. I still don't like it. It's not about me running again. I still don't like the idea of, of representing people. Um, and I certainly, my, one of my things that I have said from day one is to make the, is to not, um, create any new precincts, to move, to make the changes, we move precinct by precinct if at all possible, and I think that's what they've suggested that we could do. Don't want to have to create new precincts, split new precincts, put some, put them together. And when I had my conversation with Mr. Bobanik, he, uh, with those, the things we talked about, and by the way, he said, I, I thank you guys for reaching out to him. He said he'd be willing to come and talk to us as well, so we can clear up conversation you had with him and she had with him and I had with him. So we are all on the same page and, and clearly have this conversation regardless of what we decide to do. You know, one of us said something about reinventing the wheel. Exactly. I don't want us to reinvent the wheel. Changing our school board boundaries to match the county commissioners, we are reinventing this wheel. We are recreating, we are making major drastic changes. And I just, if I say about the same thing multiple ways, I'm sorry. I, on, you know, and I apologize if sometimes when we get on this issue, I've, I've seemed like a little bit of a Tasmanian devil on the inside. I am feeling a little Tasmanian devil because I, to me, we're making huge changes with something that is very close to being how it needs to be. We have really great population. When we had the conversation, I very much appreciated it. When we have these conversations and the priorities, uh, you know, uh, it was asked of me, uh, by Annalee, you know, you know, what do you think about your community? I'm like, you know what? When I look at my community and the community of every district, I see that balanced population. I see in every district, a, some areas of affluence and some areas of poverty, some Title One schools and some non-Title One areas. I see, you know, just the, the difference, you know, we have a really great balance right now. And so making minimal changes to that leaves us with that good balance and won't create those districts that have a larger population of people who don't have families, people don't have kids. Um, and so we're, and that, that affects your voting population, you know, and all of that. So, and I also don't think, we're not talking about many, many months. I mean, unless you're, you, we're not ready to make this decision today. So regardless, I mean, if, if the majority of the board, kind of sounds like we're going there, have already made up their mind, then you could put it on the ballot at the next board meeting and let's just say we're doing it, we're adopting the county commission lines. So we won't spend even $57,000. We won't do, we don't need to do public engagement. Public engagement is if they want to sign up for public comment, they can do that. If y'all are ready to do that, then roll and we'll, we'll do it. But I, I don't, but even if we don't do that, even if we walk through this process, we're not talking about many months. We're talking about, today is April 25th. We're talking about less than four, right at four months of a process and could be even faster if we do the option one and we're done by June and then we get it rolled, we do, adopt the resolution by July. I mean, we're, it doesn't have to, which, so we're talking about three months. There's no reason, you know, to say that it's many months. And this, adopting the county commission lines, I'm going to say again, is not the simplest option. It's not. 42,000 people, I'm going to say it one more time, 42,000 people who were, who are in District Three or Four, who would be moved out of District Three or Four. And we're going to have some, we can't do this without moving some people. But I would prefer a plan where we're moving a little precinct here, a little precinct there, to make us even, to make us within the, in the percentages. But then we've only moved a couple of thousand people out of the next election. We can't avoid it all. And I will commit to you, if we'll go through this process, I'm not going to cherry pick which precinct, I say, no, I really want that precinct and no, I really want, no, I, I'm willing to be fair about it. But I think we need to keep this, to me, simple is just do what the county commission did. Moved one precinct, two precincts, we can't go away with one because the ways our, ours are drawn, but move one or two, three at max, just do the, the, what we can do to get it even, but to disrupt as few voters as possible, to disrupt the balance that we currently have of, to me, really well demographically defined districts. I hope that you all took advantage. I asked Tammy to look up the last two rounds and I hope you guys took advantage of that and read through those notes because what I saw, even down to 2001, um, unfortunately the minutes stopped in October, but where they stopped in October was they were working with the county commission to redraw the lines and in October they said, mm, we're not doing that anymore. And I had a conversation with Janice Kershaw, um, who was in my seat at the time, and she didn't really remember a lot of details of it, but they, for them, it came down to schools. And then if you looked, uh, 2011, they considered it again. They considered, could we, could we go with the county commission lines? And they didn't. They actually made really pretty good sized changes, um, because they were like 34 percentage points out of compliance. So we're definitely not sitting there. So they made some pretty big changes and had a lot of, uh, community feedback. But, you know, again, they got it done without going, even though the option was available to them of matching the county commission lines. Go back and read through the minutes and, um, you'll see they, they chose not to do that. And again, it, part of it is the different purposes that we have. We don't really all have to touch the beach. We don't really all have to touch the Indian River Lagoon because we don't take, we don't, those aren't our kind of issues.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. I proposed this two years ago, unselfishly. We were in a situation where the county commission had reached out and asked during that time, are you guys going to get moving on your redistricting? Okay? And what ended up happening is, is that we were in a situation where our, I brought it up and said, there's two options here. We can do an accelerated redistricting just along the same number of times that you just had spoken to. But the main thing was, is if we just mirrored the county commission, this thing could be fixed. So we were out of compliance. At that time, Mr. Bobanik had been sending emails over to us, asking us to redistrict because of the situation that he had. He was, he had expressed his discontent with our district because of the behavior of us not responding to him and not going back. So what I had proposed was an unselfish, two years ago, let's move forward with something and this board decided not to. Um, that meant that for the next two years, we were out of compliance. The next thing is, is that I hear over and over again, this thing that we can't support students because the physical location of the school is not in our, in our scheme. Statutory law says that we have to follow all students to be represented, not just where the location of the school is at. So when I sit there and I drive around and I knock on doors and it's in Rockledge and the students go to Anderson and the same confusion, which I will tell you, many people along the campaign trail, along the times that I'm knocking on doors, do say to me, how is it? And the reason is, is that my district, I think, is the most impacted. So I have, I think, every single county, difference of county commission in my district. So the bottom line is, is that when I'm knocking on doors, I see it a lot where people say, well, I thought I was in school board District Four or District Three because of what I have for the county commission. The other thing that I would say is, is that our schools, we have representation, I already, I already went through it. You can move McNair, Saturn, Golf View over to District One. You can move Sable, Croton over to District Three. There's all kinds of options where the majority of students are inside another district where the physical location of the school is in another. So if it's the schools, which is not even by statute that we're supposed to do it that way, is the, can, is the part, then doing it that way evens it out and we can get to a more equal position doing that. To say that we're going to sit here and draw the districts based on the physical location of the schools is impossible. Because the bottom line is, is that Gene had, Mr. Trent has so many, I have many, it, it would be literally work over, work over work to try to get there. So we're going to have to go to a place where we just literally sit back and say, okay, the majority of students here or some of the students there, and we just equal it out. And I will tell you that we can represent a school because, not because the physical location is inside of our district, but the actual students are there and just the simple fact that I've seen all of you go around and actually represent many of the other schools in many different ways in a positive thing. So I have, I have the belief that you guys can do that. Going on to cleaning up the districts, there seems to be this, precincts, there seems to be this thing where Mr. Bobanik is saying one thing, look, he has come forward and said, if, I asked you guys two years ago to do this, there's emails that were sent, you didn't do it. No matter what you do, we're going to have to impact people. So whether we do it with the county commission or we do it minimally, or we do it like Ms. Jenkins said majorly, those people are going to be represented. He's going to have to send out the cards. That's just what's going to happen and it was part of the presentation over here. So we're going to impact people no matter what. So the argument isn't that we're not going to impact people, it's just maybe we impact less people if we go the other way. So the other component is, is that this So the other component is, is that this increased costs, at a time where we're trying to reallocate towards different priorities, we're also gonna be increasing staff time, because if we go with the county commission, then the staff time gets sent up. And, I mean, there's no doubt that we have currently policies that we can't even get to right now that are out of compliance. We have a new superintendent coming, we have a new super strategic plan coming, we have a huge amount of, um, situation where we're gonna be going through the budget, which all of those meetings that she had put down on there are gonna be allocated towards the budget. We've only gone through 2,000 out of the 9,000. We have literally so much stuff to do that this is gonna impact it. So from a cost perspective, from staff's times perspective, from the impact inside the community, from, I, I would say that this is the best-case scenario. I would also wanna make the argument that there are many counties across the state that have this, that match the county commissions. There are many that don't. That is a moot point. And where we draw our lines does not make a difference of if we represent kids. I have many schools that I represent the kids that aren't inside my district. So anyways, with that, I think that there's a majority that moved towards that.
I would like to have a second round of discussion, please, if you wouldn't mind.
Ms. Ms. Campbell, then please, when we come to the 2,000, um, proposals, don't try to say we don't have enough time for the, the rest of the board meeting.
Mr. Susan.
I just like, there's three people that have given, yeah, but there are three people, no, no.
Ms. Ms. Yule has a right to speak.
Ms. Ms. Jenkins, Ms. Jenkins.
I don't like to be dismissed by any side. Nobody does, nobody does. But I, I, rather than wrap it up tight, because you, you've got it wrapped up with a bow, you get to go around first round, we can have a second round. We're not done yet, we're not done yet. Because you brought up some new issues, and you addressed some of the issues that I've addressed or other people have addressed, but you haven't addressed all of them. You brought something up new and talked about two years ago, so I would like to share of two years ago, which will be in the minutes, it'll be on the video with the conversations that we had. Yes, we had the opportunity to, two years ago to have this conversation. It was presented by Ms. Hand at the last board meeting, that the census data did not come out until late. The county commissioners got a late start with their very long process. And what I recall you asking us to do was to say, absolutely what you said, let's just go along with whatever the county commissioners do. But at that point, it was gonna be going along blindly, because they were in the process. They didn't know what they were doing. They did not vote on what they were going to do until November. And I, as a board member who was on the board with you at the time, was not willing to say yes to whatever the county commissioners do, not knowing what they're going to do. I was not willing to do that. And by the time we had the decision that they had made in November, we had from November to December, with a Christmas break and a Thanksgiving break in there, to make, to go through this process and to see, and to do our own process, which does not have to be as long and complicated, but then we were short on time. And we couldn't, and we couldn't control that. And I was not, I'm not going to blindly say yes to what another entity is going to do, not having any idea how it's going to affect us. I'm not going to say yes ahead of time and write them a blank check for a decision that is our job to make. So I'm just gonna clarify that. Yes, you brought it up, and you've said that many, many times, you brought it up, we're out of compliance, we were out of compliance this much, they were out of compliance that much. They got their job done, but we did not have time, and our general counsel told us at the time, we were close enough to deal with it, and we would push it off to 2023, because that was the next opportunity that we had. We've talked about cost increases, I hear you, I hear you, but we're talking about $57,000. So unless you've got another cost increase, 'cause the supervisor of elections and having conversation with our consultants has explained, it is not an increased cost to them, unless we do something like create new precincts. They have to print all the same things, so we're not talking about extra increase. And when you talk about too much work to do, I hear you, Mr. Susan, I am tired, I'm exhausted, and I know I'm looking at the next few months, and I know we've got so much work to do, and I am committed to do it. And I will get up early and stay up late and do whatever I have to do to get it done, but I'm not going to dismiss this as an issue that's not as important, because we can just so quickly and glibly take care of it. I, I, I am, I am opposed to this. I believe there are people, when they realize who, who they are, that will be affected, will be opposed to this, and I hope they speak up. If this is what happens, I will, once the decision is made, go along. And the schools, yes, I would like to have an even number of schools, I hear you, we can be creative, and yes, we represent all schools, and I think I have done a pretty good job of that myself, too. But we're talking, that you have not answered to me the big issue of the number of voters who we're shoving out of an election. You have not addressed that.
Are you finished?
Yes, I am.
Um, I didn't mean that really, I just didn't want to cut you off. So, so first and foremost, Mr. Bobanik wasn't the supervisor of elections two years ago. Just wanna make sure that that is clear. I also spoke with him, and it appears that my conversation was very similar to Ms. Campbell's. And again, when I specifically asked him, how would this make things easier for the supervisor of elections? He said, well, it's possible that we might be able to reduce the number of precincts, but I don't know how many precincts would even be impacted. I don't even know if we've got that response yet. It may be the most minimal number. He doesn't know. He said that very transparently. He also told me that you had articulated that one board member would be displaced. So if we're gonna have this conversation, let's be transparent from the get-go, from the get-go. Have some integrity. We know where you're coming from, I understand the intention. One thing that's really important for the community to realize that we have not discussed publicly is, Mr. Gibbs did send us a memo that said, sure, we can reside out of our districts, um, but that opens us up to a financial liability of constituents suing the school board for the two members being out of their area. So, Mr. Gibbs, because I'm sure that'll be magically refuted for accuracy, can you please speak to that?
Yeah, I had mentioned that there is a possibility that someone could try and challenge a board member being out of their district. The law is pretty clear that, uh, the board member would get to serve out their elected term, so we would have to defend the lawsuit, so there would be a financial impact to the district should someone sue the district. But, uh, I, I'm not overly concerned with the result of that lawsuit.
Right. So the law is very clear, but that doesn't stop, in a politically divisive environment, from constituents doing that, in which you will then take on the burden and cost of that lawsuit. Just wanna make that clear to the public. That's your taxpayer money that we're risking. You know, there was conversations about, uh, the schools don't matter, we can represent them all, yada, 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 but county commission lines also don't take into effect attendance boundaries either. So, I mean, that's not a thing. Nobody, nobody's talking about trying to get the voters and the students to live within your area that also go to the school. That's, that's like virtually impossible. What it means is to have a balance of schools in which those staff and parents and communities can reach out to and establish an easy, consistent connection with. That's all that that means. It doesn't have to do with the voters literally living inside of your district. And I think that's a really reasonable concept and request. I think that's what you're going to hear from the people who are potentially going to be displaced by a decision of adopting the county commission lines. The increase of staff time, no, that's the point of hiring potentially an outside consultant agency. Ms. Hand, when she met with us individually, I would assume she had the same conversation with everyone, not just with me, requested and recommended that it go outside of the district to not increase staff time. So that, that shouldn't be a concern at all. Um, and again, the increase of cost, this is a drop in the, in the bucket of our budget. This is a responsibility that we have statutorily to our constituents and the taxpayers who fund our budget. Um, and again, if you have someone bring a lawsuit to those two districts, you're going to eat that cost instantly.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hand, I think you have a majority of individuals that wanna move forward with the county commission seats, so with that, what would you like us to do?
Yes, sir, the, the only question I have remaining is, um, I was contemplating a public engagement process similar to what we did with the attendance boundaries, where we have a QR code and access on the website to a Google document where people can comment, and then we would provide that to the board at the time of adoption, um, looking at either May 30th or June 13th. Do you have a preference?
So, we make the action, you can, you would bring it forward on May 30th?
Yes, sir.
I think, I think May 30th would be the correct time. And the issue that we have is, is that we're gonna be, let's talk about how that communication goes out, you know what I mean? So.
Can I, I, I just wanted to get a chance to speak back for one second, in regards to some of the things that were said.
Yeah.
Um, Ms. Campbell, one of the things, and I guess I haven't clearly conveyed this, um, the reason that I like the county commissioners' plan so much is that there is room for variance for growth. It gets us well below that 10% mark that we're supposed to be at.
Eight point something.
It's 8.5, but I mean, it, it gets us below it, so there is room for growth with it. Um, and I don't know, I guess I didn't accurately convey that to you. Um, one of the other things, I guess, that was said was in regards to the amount of voters that you, you took care of that, it's not 100,000 voters, it's 40-something thousand voters that it potentially impacts, but again, of those voters, um, I would love to see all 40,000 of them vote in an election, but, but they don't. Um, that's the reality when it comes to things that are, you know, school board-related usually. Um, so again, this, to me, I think it makes the most sense, but I understand why you guys feel differently about it. Um, I'm just telling you that's where I'm at with it.
All right. Thank you very much. Next work session is on Board Policy 3500 Remote Work.
Yes, sir, thank you. The board had asked us to accelerate that, and, uh, Ms. Green has done so, and, uh, if you have some, any comments or, uh, questions about?
I can't tell you how excited I am about this. This is a argument in my private side that we fight all the time, and I don't like it there, but I really like it here. So.
We believe it's going to be good for the district as well, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Do you need a microphone?
She does.
Yeah, I think Mr. Brin's coming up on this.
Can you, can you just step aside and let, uh, Dr.? Oh, got it, thank you.
Mr. Susan, Ms. Hand, board. At the request of the board, we have, uh, fast-tracked our remote work policy. This particular policy is not required by any Florida statute, but by, um, the availability and the things we're able to do now in the remote world. Uh, we have had a pilot over the last year that has been implemented, um, in our educational technology department, and, uh, the, the pilot, um, this is a, a policy that, um, they have been working on for a year, so we have a little bit of background and, and work behind us. And in this policy, you find the forms that are required, the approval processes that are required, and the eligibility list for the non-bargaining personnel that are eligible for the remote work. It follows the Neola templates, and the administrative procedures are, uh, Brevard's implementation processes.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this topic?
Yeah, I just, I wanna say thank you. I think you probably were in the room when I was having these conversations over and over again, um, about how important I think this is for us to, um, modify and change the way we look at some of our positions here at BPS, um, in order to keep up with the ever-growing, changing environment in the industry around us that is pulling our staff members and making it more and more difficult for us to, to recruit and, uh, retain our staff members. So thank you for working on this so quickly, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Dr. Green. I just wanted to make one request, 'cause I didn't see this job description specifically down at the bottom, you had a list of the employees who are or are not eligible. Can you please make sure the administrative assistant to the board is included in those who are eligible?
It, it was, uh, a new list was uploaded this morning. We had missed some people in the mostly vacant positions, and so we have cleaned that up, and she was the first one who noticed that.
She was looking for her name.
So I think she uploaded that this morning.
Awesome, thank you. Oh, I see it, right there, it's number two.
Yeah, this is right there.
Uh, Mr. Trent?
Now, again, I just think it's catching up the times, and, um, thank you for the work.
I hope we use this as a marketing tool, 'cause I think this will actually attract some, some people to our district that, that will look at this and say, hey, a remote opportunity to work is something that they're interested in, so I'm excited about this.
I can tell you, Mr. Tiedem is just waiting for that opportunity.
Yeah, IT is like, yes, so they're cheering us on, so we're excited about this. Thank you so much.
And I think I, I, uh, sentiment of the board members, uh, IT was specifically losing people in interviews, because other companies are going remote. And there's a couple people that are pretty high up in our organization that we're gonna possibly go to another place because of, based upon this. So I, I'm really proud of moving forward. I thank the pilot group, I thank all of your work, Ms. Green, I think that this is a great thing, so thank you very much. I think we're all in positive support, so move forth and do great things, right? Um, next session, work session is Board Policy 5511 Dressing and Grooming.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gibbs had sent some additional information out to board members, some survey results as requested by the board. I think we're ready to discuss that. Uh, Dr. Webly was not able to be here with us today, but we'll do our best to try to respond to questions if, uh, Dr. Cody, uh, would mind joining us at the table.
I think the, um, everybody's aware, and maybe the public's not, that there was a survey that went out to our students, and it came back with a lot of responses. I think that that was a great idea. Um, uh, in the process of doing this, I think my concern has always been that we're able to do this ahead of the, the next year, and it's been indicated from staff that we definitely can take this in like we should and move forward. I think, even though the students are not part of our policy or our, our voter group, they are our voter group. Like, so they're part of our demographics, and we should listen to them as much as possible, so, um, great idea. Um, I open the floor for conversation. Ms. Jenkins, do you wanna go first?
Do we have, you, they have something to present?
Do you, are you guys presenting anything, or, I mean, I think?
I don't think we're prepared to present anything in Dr. Webly's absence, so you have some comments.
I don't, I don't have anything to add, I feel like we had a healthy conversation last time, I think it was.
Yep, yep. Ms. Campbell?
Um, I'm, I'm.
Okay, Mr. Trent?
No, I just wanna hear what they have to say.
Ms. Jenkins?
I, I, I'm Ms. Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna, go on.
I would just like to say that we have a lot of responses that we got, and these came in yesterday afternoon, I think around 5:00 PM. Um, so, uh, in all trans-
Did you see them all?
Yeah, in transparency here, I have not had the chance to process through 150 pages of comments that we have in this, this, uh, spreadsheet here. So I, I wanna hear what the students have to say, because this is gonna directly impact them. And so I think we talked about this a little bit last time, on the fact that maybe we should move this one more meeting out, just to give adequate time to go through everything and make sure we're getting this right. Mr. Gibbs, that will still keep us on the same timeline in order to?
We'll push it, we'll have to re-advertise and push it, but we can move it to the work, have this work session and on May 9th, it'll go public hearing, May 30th for final approval, June, I think, 11th.
And that would still be well before school starts, so.
Yeah, and Dr. Webly confirmed that that would still be time to incorporate those changes into the Code of Conduct, which is right now out for revisions. So this month, they're working on those, or through May, they're working on those revisions. Those revisions are due, I believe, May 1st, right, Chris? Somewhere around there?
Okay.
So we had had a conver- sorry.
You're good, I, I.
You had a conver- we just had a conversation about printing, and I, actually, I think maybe I was a little out of date, that we don't actually print the dress code in the planners, we, it's all virtual, digital.
Dr. Webly said they print on request, so if there's somebody that wants them, and they might print like, uh, so many to put in the front office, so you can grab them.
Right, well, and the truth is, I thought about it, the dress code is different at many schools, so, um, uh, because they can have tighter uniforms, whatever. No, I'm in agreement, I think we need to spend the, our due diligence looking over these, uh, this data, and, uh, look at some more red lines. And I know I've had some more community feedback to you and talked to some principals, too, too. And so I, I'm in favor of moving it off one more.
I think, if I can be correct on this, you would, even though the component of this, we do need to have some sort of a policy ready for the next board meeting so that we, what I think the proper process would be for us to review these and then set an individual meeting with either Ms. Hand or Ms. Cody and say, these are the things that we're seeing. And then you bring back to that meeting the next, is that about the correct process you're thinking?
You could do it that way. I know in the packet that I sent yesterday, Student Services and Dr. Webly provided me a red line that they tried to incorporate a lot of the changes into it. So you can look at that as well and say you agree or you don't agree with it when you meet with staff and that would be fun.
If everybody's okay with that kind of a direction, you know what I mean? I think that that's pretty good. Because I'm reading, and I want the public to understand that there's this conception out there that the students are advocating for like less dress code. And it's, and if you read some of these, there are some of those, but there's completely the opposite where many of our students are actually saying, stop this from going on. And I was, I was the, I mean, you look at number one. I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty good. So I think that there's a good response from our students and if that's okay with the direction, I think that that would be the best thing. Just understand, board members, that when this thing gets published in, you know what I mean, in seven days or whenever for the next one before March or May 9th, that if there's any changes that need to be made, we need to get it ahead of the actual meeting so that it's, it's in there. And I think that there's going to be some more meetings added, so it might have a shorter window when you go to notice because of the extra meetings that are being noticed anyway. So it's not a, it's not going to hurt us by waiting an entire meeting anyway.
When I advertise it this week, it's going to be on that schedule, so.
Yeah.
I have to advertise it for those dates.
Yep, and we'll have those days probably by the end of the day.
So you're going to advertise it for a workshop on May 9th or you're going to advertise?
Yeah, this, this is the board's opportunity to make changes. So this meeting will now move to May 9th and then the first public hearing will be May 30th. So that's where, if you make changes at that, we're re-advertising and kicking it off again, so.
So wait, so we normally have like a workshop like this?
That'll be May 9th.
Right.
And you can make changes.
If we don't make changes, it can go that night.
If you don't make changes there, on May 30th, you cannot make changes, otherwise we start over again.
Right, our next workshop, we need to be prepared to, for any changes that we want to see in the policy.
And then if it goes through that policy, when's the final date that it gets approved?
The first one in June would be the public hearing number two.
Which will give us enough time. Because the other thing is, we're not just printing something that we're handing to people. We also have to educate staff. We have to create all the other pieces. That, that takes a little bit of time. So I think the direction's great. I like some of these, these responses. And so if you guys are okay, does anybody else have any comments on this one?
We got some funny responses. We have somebody who's advocating for clown shoots.
Listen, listen, I think these are, these are kind of funny.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Everybody did pretty good on this one. With nothing else, the next topic is conscious discipline discussion.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Wright had asked for board discussion on this item and we have just provided some information as to where we are with the program. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, give me just one second. Sorry, I'm trying to pull it up. The main reason I wanted to bring this up was at the last board meeting, you know, I brought up the question about conscious discipline and the cost that we were going to incur to put 225 of our educators through conscious discipline training and felt that we could possibly look at taking that, those funds and using that for a different type of training. So I'm glad that staff has put together something that now looks like we currently have purchased conscious discipline. It's something that's not incurring any additional cost for the schools that are currently participating in it. Is that correct?
I believe we had four or five sessions towards like the last couple of weeks that were scheduled, but that's the only thing that we have, that we have, that we'll need to pay for.
Okay. In regards to the funds that were allocated, those, I thought it was 225,000, but this is now, I do have a question in regards to this last, page four of this presentation. So it's saying that the funds that were allocated are now, have been reallocated to different. How does that happen, just out of curiosity? Because I thought that would come before us.
So in our federal programs, the board annually looks at our federal programs, sort of scope of work. Typically, that's done in June, July, August kind of timeframe. And then if there was an amendment, those amendments are approved by the superintendent. So the board looks at the overall program under the information agenda. So there, there's not actual board approval of the Title 1, 2, 3, 4, Title IX programs. So you, but you do see it for any comments and perspective. And then as they are amended through the course of the year, those are amended through the superintendent's office.
I guess my question still, still remains a little bit on, because we were, it was presented before us to approve the 225,000 for the conscious discipline. And so I, again, you know, I got several emails. What do you plan on doing with this? What do you plan on doing with this? And so again, looking at different training programs that are out there.
So we still need to look at different training programs that are out there. There are other sources of funding, including this one, that can be available for those other sources of funding. This particular funding was a rollover, rollover from the previous year, so we needed to get it expended by August. So that's why we, we put it in as an amendment to get that done.
Okay.
But if there are other programs that we want to fund, these federal programs are available to do so. So those two are not mutually exclusive.
Okay. All right. Well, it's something that I would like for us to, to consider moving forward. There's several things that our, our district needs to look at. One of the things that I'm very passionate about is this K through 3 reading that we need to focus in on. And so I've been looking into the Orton-Gillingham program as far as training some of our educators on this and the success that they've had. And so I just want us to be thinking about this as I gather more information and bring it back forward because I think this is something that could be impactful, that we will see tremendous dividends on over the course of years if we could focus on getting our teachers up to date and trained on this.
Hand, let me just ask her, so what you're, what I, what I'm hearing you say in the charge to the board is, there's a, the money that was down there at the bottom on, I think it was page four, you had concerns about it going there because you wanted to try to possibly reallocate towards something else?
Well, that, that is true, but it sounds like from Ms. Hand, it's not either or?
Correct. Correct. So if there are other, other training programs the board would like us to explore, we have the opportunity to do so as we're developing our federal programs for the upcoming years.
Sounds good.
Who decided, or you decided this, right? That somebody presented this to you or something? I guess I just wasn't clear on that process on how that happened.
So Dr. Sullivan and I got together on this and she recommended that we could utilize the funds in an expeditious manner for something we needed to do. And so we, we purposed them in this manner.
Okay. And the only reason is, I mean, that, that money really was kind of earmarked for professional development of some sort, right? I mean, it's a training.
Can I?
Please.
Title IV is actually not our professional development grant. Title II is. The conscious discipline applied to Title IV because of the second scope of work that is targeted on student well-being, discipline, counseling, and support. So it actually fit into the grant, not as a professional development item, but as a discipline item. The grant has three specific scopes of which we can apply for. So we generally will keep, we call it a graveyard of things that we either underfund or priorities that don't make it. And we try to always stick with previously identified board priorities to fill those gaps. None of that's been approved, just prioritizing. But this grant is not the professional development grant. We have a Title II grant that is, and then we can always adjust and make professional development requirements. Reading actually wouldn't fit into the Title IV grant.
It would not?
It would not.
All right, thank you.
But there is, there's, we can, we generally will adjust based on the timelines. And I feel really confident that if the board lands on a different priority as Ms. Hand said, we can work through the amendment process and readjust priorities.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I think, Ms. Campbell?
Yep. So thank you for clarifying that on the purposes of the Title IV grant. I appreciate that. And just to address, I think some were concerned, I heard in there, Ms. Wright, you know, if, if any of these items are over 50,000, it will, it will come back to us.
Right.
That's why the other one came back to, came to us because it was within the scope of the grant, but it was over $50,000. So the superintendent can't approve that by himself, by herself. The, I would just, last night, Mr. Susan, Ms. Jenkins, I myself, attended the Bright-Nehemiah Action, Nehemiah Action Event.
There's a lot of stuff there.
Yeah. And so one of the things that they were challenging, I don't know if you guys got a chance to meet with Bright, but they were talking about the science of reading. And I had, I called Jane Klein yesterday and said, hey, where are we on the science of reading? And she shared with me about the work that we're already doing to train our, in this, this great body of research that's come out, you know, getting rid of the, or looking past, you know, the three-Qing method and the, and to this very specific. So I, before we, I would encourage you to talk to her about the training that we've, we've launched into. Specifically, it's tackling phonics, phonemic awareness, those, those five, I think they're a core, things that are part of the, that body of research, science of reading. So I just encourage you to have that conversation with her about what's already being done in, in that realm.
Gotcha.
Mr. Trent?
Well, I'm hoping, hoping we continue looking at behavioral trainings with maybe the Title IV funds, other programs. I'm sure they're, as soon as the vote came down last time, they, they were thinking of, what's next? I know I've gotten some calls on other programs, so I, I look forward to that conversation also, so.
Ms. Jenkins?
I mean, I said my piece on this last time we had this conversation. I trust our staff, their expertise, their professionalism to always present what they think is best for our students and our staff. Clearly, I believe that this was best for our students and staff as well as they did. So I think asking them to come back with some other program so quickly is unrealistic. It would be disingenuine of them to come forward with something else that they don't necessarily have the buy-in themselves. We also, as you can see at the beginning of this presentation, are committed to, because there is no refund, 132 participants still going through conscious discipline training and implementing it within their classrooms. I said this last time, I think we didn't ask our staff and our schools that are using this program how they feel about it being ceased. So once it is, I think it would be in the best interest of this board to ask the staff in the schools how they feel when it is removed from their, from their school and how it's impacting them.
All right. And with that, I would say that I have asked staff and I have moved through. And being a former teacher for nine years, I know that part of getting a hold of discipline is, is that you have some sort of classroom management. And there's a lot of programs that we have inside of our school district that are underfunded that go into that regard. I would say that for the past five, no, probably four years, I've advocated absolutely for a program that comes out of Escambia County with amazing metrics and amazing results. I think that we as a, as a school district have an opportunity. Ms. Hand said that some of those are going to be presented to us on May 9th. I appreciate it. And I think that there's pretty much board consensus to hold on actually spending any of that money on robotics and all that other stuff until we hear from the May 9th group that we may be able to expand some of that. You may want to have somebody talk about some of those other things that you were talking about. Does that make sense?
Sorry, I'm not sure.
So, May 9th, there's going to be some opportunities to come forward with presentations and stuff that are already existing programs inside of our district that might help that. Is that about right, Ms. Hand?
We've convened a little focus group of folks that work on recruitment, retention, training, so talking about kind of all of these issues that blend together. And so I think we can provide some briefings to you as we're working through the process, but we've got, there's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah.
It's probably the best way to say it. And all of these things relate to one another. So as we talk through the discipline audit, for example, there's pieces of that that relate to pieces of this.
Yeah.
Our training, we've had a lot of conversation with our teachers' union about the types of training that they would like to have. So started to talk with our, our professional development folks and trying to engage them with our student services folks and our leading learning folks. So we're, we're all talking together about the best way to deliver these services.
I think that's a great conversation for all of us to learn and see what's out there and see where the things is. And it comes directly with what Ms. Jenkins had said, where we listen to staff and they present to us and we work from there. I think that's a good point.
Hold on just a second, because I, when you were summarizing, it sounded like you were summarizing saying that we all had consensus to put a hold on the robotics.
I said, not all of us. I said there was a consensus.
Well, I didn't know that we were, I don't think I weighed in on that.
Well, it hasn't been brought before us, so I'm assuming that that's just like kind of what they're, they're planning on doing with it.
No, that is different. These is what, if you're asking for, there's, there's reallocating $240,000 to STEM Robotics and all this stuff. What I thought I heard, and I may have been incorrect, is that instead of allocating to them, that we may be able to pause and use them towards, so that we're not being restricted into any of those type programs that we hear coming forward. That was all.
So the 240, we need, we've already submitted the amendment to the state. We're waiting for the state to approve the amendment and then we'd like to spend it on those items that are in the presentation. That's roll-forward money that we need to, we need to spend. We still have a lot of opportunity to bring forward different ideas on professional development through our federal programs that we can present to you. So, so those two things are not mutually exclusive, but I, I would, I would recommend that we not pivot on the 240 at this point in time because I think we need, we need to move forward and these are things that we need to buy.
And you have it, and the clock is ticking.
And I think, I think that for some of the public to see what's going on, I think one of the keys is, is that the board is realigning some of their priorities. And I think that that's what's happening is, and we are in the process of learning some of these for the first time. So thank you so much for allocating and understanding and everything else, Ms. Hand. I appreciate it.
And just in the interest of transparency, if, if folks are interested in what we're doing with our federal programs, there is information on our website. The full application as to how these monies are being spent, as well as the amendments requested, those are all on the website. So if you go to Departments and Programs and look under Title 1, Title 2, Title 4, the information is there and available for the public to see.
That's awesome. Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to add in here, I thank you, because I think this actually, you, you mentioned this alliance of board priorities that we have clearly said, we want to be, I'm going to quote you, Mr. Susan, "The district sends students to space." Not currently, like in their current form, but in the future, send them to space. And so STEM, robotics, CTE Labs, that, that very well aligns with what this board has been consistent in saying. So good job.
I have a request. I would like, Mr. Susan, if you could inform your fellow board members, the schools that you visited, and if you have any correspondences with those staff that feel a negative way towards it, to share it with us. Because if we're going to be making decisions about this going forward, it would be helpful for us all to be privy to that same information.
Are you speaking to conscious discipline now? Is that what you're saying, Ms. Jenkins?
Yes, Mr. Susan.
I'm trying to figure out where you're saying.
Yes, Mr. Susan.
I am not going to-
Point of order. I'm not done. Point of order. Thank you.
I asked you a question.
Mr. Susan, I wasn't done talking. Thank you. When I make a statement for us to do our due diligence and ask our staff that are impacting how they feel about a program being removed, and your rebuttal is that you already has as if, as if that is end-all, be-all, well, then I think that the rest of the board deserves to hear the responses that you had. Because I too was an educator for six years. I too had personal experience with conscious discipline. Clearly, my perspective is very different than yours. And the perspective of our 4,500 teachers is going to be very different as well and diverse. And so if you are hearing differently, it would be beneficial for me to see those responses. So yes, I am requesting this communication that you claim that you had to be shared with the entire board. And if I get any communication, I will do the same.
Ms. Jenkins, I would remind you that as soon as you start putting people's names and information out there, that they-
You can absolutely redact it.
No, Ms. Jenkins, I am finishing my answer to your question.
Mr. Susan, do not raise your voice to me.
You know what? Forget it. Forget it.
You can redact their names, Mr. Susan.
Let's move on. All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Maybe it is your line.
The next topic is MCOA recommendation athletics follow-up.
Yes, Dr. Sullivan will be briefing you on this topic.
Working on a segue, and I'm just struggling, but one thing I do know is that we all really
care about the safety of our students. A couple of weeks ago, a month ago now, I'm not sure, it's a bit of a blur, you all had a board presentation on athletics, athletic issues, and athletic concerns. Little did I know on that day that I would be taking responsibility for athletics. So, in the past couple of weeks, I have worked alongside my directors, school principals, athletic directors, and officials to, to understand some of the immediate problems. And one of the immediate problems at hand is our contract with our Midcoast Officials Association. And it's an immediate issue, of course, because we've got to get it in place for the start of the year, but there were some challenges that really needed to be resolved, particularly in terms of timeliness of pay of the officials, if you all recall from that presentation. And the reason for that delay, it, there are just multiple, multiple points of failure, if you will. In large part, the schools do not have the funds to initiate the original purchase orders. So, typically, in a situation in the fall, you would enter a purchase order for the season and pay against that purchase order. That encumbers all of your funds. And so, this, many of our schools did not have enough funds to even open the purchase order to be able to pay against the invoices. The second thing, of course, is processing time with the Midcoast Officials. They have to essentially by hand enter every roster for every school, for every set of contests, to generate the invoice process. Those invoices were handled very differently at the different schools with very different outcomes. The core of the issue comes down to finances. Right now, through Athletic Equity, the board for the last several years has been allocating around $200,000 a year to try to help offset some of the fees. As a former principal, I can tell you that you, you got a couple of buckets. If you have a home game, you have to pay officials. If you have an away game, you have to pay transportation, not to mention all of the other elements that come into it. And so, what I saw in the contract is there was suggestions of decreasing officials and recommendations that would, in my opinion, be detrimental to the district and allowing them to have less than recommended officials, just because of the cost. And I, and I think, in my opinion, looking at the history of it, that we need to consider increasing our funding commitment to the schools to maintain a safe environment. I know the board for several years has discussed, what does those funds look like, what does equity look like, and my recommendation is that the district equitably fund all officials. And so, doing that serves two things. One, it definitely increases the board commitment. So, the board commitment would increase from $200,000 a year to $550,000 a year. However, I think the district is very vulnerable in the fact that we have paid those official bills on the backs of ticket sales, and for the vast majority of our sports, the ticket sales has not come close to covering the cost of the officials. And safety really is weighing on me, so I've been wearing this athletics hat for just a couple of weeks, but I wore it for a long time as a principal, and just how we support this as a district and how we've sort of left schools to fend for themselves, it has been weighing on me. So, my recommendation is the board consider that increase to that allocation. With that allocation at the district level, we would manage all of the accounting, logistics, and processing for the MCOA. And I'll just give you an example of what that might look like, and it's something we do right now with dual enrollment and some other funds. So, the invoices would come to us, the newly hired county athletic director would cross-reference those, we would pay those invoices out. We do it with school nurses, we do it with dual enrollment, we do it with a ton of different areas. It's not problematic. You know, we love spreadsheets, so we'll keep lots of detailed records on the different amounts. Right now, for the average of the last two years, officials have cost us around $528,000. I'm recommending $550,000, just because I'm unclear. And for this first year, until we get a tighter rein, we've added sports, and I want to make sure that there's appropriate funding there. The reason we are bringing this recommendation to you in advance of the other recommendations is the contract process with MCOA. And so, we're looking for that informal three thumbs up to build out the contract under that expectation. In terms of funding possibilities, in discussion, of course, extensive discussions with Ms. Hand, this is something that could be Fund 100 or could be millage as well, to be, to be determined, because athletic support was one of our identified areas in what we gave to the voters on that program development bucket, that bucket B, that we're calling B1, to be specific. And so, we know that, that's something that could look at, but in terms of developing out the system to begin the contracting in the fall, we're asking the board for any questions or follow-up, or if they feel strongly against adding the funds towards athletics, I'd like, you know, we need to know that and go back to the drawing board, or feeling confident that the board could take it. From my lens, as, as a principal of a school without a lot of money in the past, the equity of just knowing that your officials are covered is huge. I went out to all the principals, and this is just unilateral support, as you can imagine. The time and effort in processing on the schools, they would very much appreciate the help in trying to manage that, as well as just one less thing, because in my opinion, having officials at every contest is not something that should be second-guessed based on the difficulties they're having with finance. And so, I just asked the board for their consideration, happy to answer any questions within my couple of weeks on this hat, but again, lots of years on the school-based hat of trying to do it and to move forward and working out the contract with the officials.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Does anybody wish to comment on this? Mr. Trent?
So, this would cover middle schools as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep. And then, so, so really, I mean, you were talking about a, not a seismic shift, but, you know, a big shift, because not only would we be taking care of that, that, all those ticket sales then would be able, the schools would be able to use those to pour back into the programs, to buy equipment.
Exactly.
And train, you know, pay for training and all the other things that they have to cover.
Exactly. So, so right now, in, in high school, for example, an average high school has been receiving about $12,000 in that $200,000 bucket. The officials' bills are typically between 34, 35 and 40,000.
Okay.
So, out of the money that's coming into the program, the vast majority of it is going out to officials. And so, things like transportation, you know, balls, things that you need, safety equipment, there are a lot of things that have to get cut, because you have to pay for officials. And so, our families that are raising money, all of those things that are hap, you know, I think about the communities, and yeah, it, understand that you have to raise money for like the nicer uniform or the fancy bat, but you would hope not for the bare-bones execution of the activity. And so, by taking that burden, and as a district being clear, like, you know, we can't necessarily support athletics and activities at how we would all hope and dream, but from a safety point of view, we're going to cover officials in every site. I just think it's really important.
Yeah, thank you for answering that question, and I, I appreciate it, and I'm in support.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I too am in support. So, I, I met with the former athletic director, and I don't know if his stats were true, but what he said to me was that 9,000 of our high school students, approximately 13.5% of them, participate in a sport. So, he, he said that this is a tremendous amount of our population, and then, not to mention, we have a lot of state champs in a lot of different sporting arenas. So, I 100% support that. I, I'm glad that this is something that we can take off of the schools, and I think it'll help support the children in the athletics department. So, thank you for bringing this forward. This will be a good thing.
Thank you.
Absolutely. This should be something that's done at the district level. I won't burden you with all the ideas in education, or in, in athletics. I'm, I'm hoping the, the new person in that position, we have, we have lots to talk about, about what the individual schools can do with the gate money.
Yep.
Even the cost of students entering events, would really like to see that nearly nothing. We, we need more kids, more students taking advantage of, of activities. And, but on this part, thank you so, yeah, for doing this.
Thank you.
Ms. Jenkins?
You obviously have my support, and thank you again for putting another hat on top of your rack. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, I'm not sure, but there was another official group that was coming in that was like basketball. They had started conversations about six, eight months ago. I'll have them contact you just to make sure that, because I know the MCOA is one, but there was another group that because of the, because of what we were doing had decimated the amount of umpires, referees, and stuff in certain sports, to where the MCOA could not, you know what I mean, give some, they were having troubles. So, this other group came in. So, I, I just remembered that, so I'll get them in contact to make sure that in the event that they're in there. I think the guy's named Scooter, he's from Titusville, he runs, he, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
I'll be touched with that, but I.
I'll add it to the list.
But no, he's a really good guy. Anyway, so, this is, this is also, just so everybody knows, this is a big deal, because if we centralize this and pay it out of the school district, we have referees that are getting paid on a regular basis and more routine rather than the other piece, which was killing us for retention and recruitment, because we were losing refs, because they were sometimes waiting months to get paid for like reffing a game, which was unfair. Dr. Sullivan, this is huge. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And the emphasis on safety is 100% right.
We, we appreciate it, and we'll certainly work towards the contract now that we know we have the board permission, working very well with Mr. Muzzi, and we will proceed. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. The next up is a topic of a draft charter independence, Citizens Committee for Millage Oversight. Is that you, Ms. Sue?
Yes, sir. I'm going to, I'm going to introduce this. Ms. Lysinski and Mr. Gibbs and I worked on this together. We modeled this after the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee for the SIR Tax. It's recognizing that the millage is a little bit different, because it's more on the operations side, and there's quite a bit that goes on the compensation side versus the capital side. But just to kind of run through some of the highlights, the purpose of the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee, very similar, is simply to oversee, not direct, but to review how the, the millage is spent. The term, we talked about it and felt like, in this case, because the millage is a four-year program, that we would, we would, the term of office, we would recommend be the full four years. And then, if, if it needed to be extended, the board could do that at that time, but it seemed like a better idea to just have it coincident with the entire term of the millage. One of the challenges I have with the SIR Tax Citizens Oversight Committee is the terms are staggered in two years, and it just, it gets very confusing. So, this would keep the group together for the full four years. Like the SIR Tax, we recommended annual reports to both the board and the audit committee, as we do with the SIR Tax, with intermittent reports. Recommended a minimum quarterly, not, I'm sorry, I'm not going to say that, not quarterly, but a minimum four times a year. With the way the millage revenue comes in, quarterly may not make exact sense, so we might be, might make more sense to have a January meeting and a February meeting, and then an August meet, something like that versus strict quarterly. So, we just said minimum of four times per year. With the SIR Tax, it says quarterly, and we actually meet six times per year, because that, I think, benefits us to have the group be together every other month. May not be the same with the SIR Tax, with the millage, because of the big revenue that comes in, in December versus the SIR Tax is every month. So, that the revenue stream is a little bit different. We did recommend a similar membership structure, no less than seven, no more than 11 members. That's worked really well with the, the SIR Tax Citizens Oversight Committee. The qualifications for the members would be folks that are in fields relating to the purpose of the millage. On the, the SIR Tax side, it was a little more capital-oriented, so we had construction, finance-type folks, but on the, on the millage side, I think it's a little bit broader. So, we, we left it much more, much more broad. The terms would be, again, starting July 1st through June 30th, 2027. And I believe that, that sums up the, the points in the charter. I'd like to get this on an upcoming board agenda, because I, I'd like to get it approved, and then the next item, I'll talk a little bit about how we solicit members, but I, I'd like to get going so that we do have this body seated in July.
Everybody okay with just giving her the thumbs up to move on it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. We're good.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
And then, the follow-on item is the member selection process. Some of you may have been here when we did the, the SIR Tax. I know, Mr. Susan, you were a part of that selection process as, as a member.
Yeah, I got selected.
But this was kind of done independently, in terms of the initial proffering of candidates for the independent oversight committee to the board. I've talked with Ms. Kershaw and met with the board at Revard Schools Foundation. They are willing to, to take on the vetting process, so the applications would be sent to them, they would review the applications and present a recommended slate of, of members to the school board. There's lots of other ways to do this, but I thought I would, I would propose one way that we could do that, that is somewhat independent from the school board, to create that initial independent group.
Okay.
They'll, they'll bring back the recommendations of who, once they vet the candidates?
Yes.
And then, we at that point will select?
Yes. The school board makes the actual selection. The Revard Schools Foundation or another independent group would vet the applications, review them, and make a recommendation to you.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I just had a question, because I was looking, when I was reading the last agenda, I was like, well, how does that, how did that first group get picked? Because now, what we do is, with ICOC, if someone rotates off, or they resign or whatever, then the ICOC takes applications, and they pick their own members. And that's how it would be set for.
Correct.
In the future. So, but I, in the, with this other, with the ICOC, the group was selected by the, the chambers and kind of a, so are, are we talking about just foregoing that?
That became a process in and of itself.
Okay.
I wasn't here when that happened either, so I, I don't fully know, but I, my understanding of that process is it was a process to select the process and.
Gotcha.
Got a, a little bit unwieldy.
Oh, that's government, right?
So, I, I felt like this was a, a good option that already includes community members that could take a look at the, at the potential applications, but there are certainly other options if the board would like us to do something different.
Okay. And then, just, just again, going back to the, the charter, then, if there were to be any vacancies because someone resigned or moved away, or we need to, we renew it and somebody decided not to re-up, then that would be, just like the IOC, the, the actual.
Yes, ma'am. It would go through the IC, go through the Citizens Oversight Committee to review applications and then make a recommendation to the board for the appointment.
Okay. So, you're right, so, so the, so the Revard Schools Foundation would just be the, kind of like FSBA and our superintendent search, they're, they're the ones.
Correct.
Taking the applications and organizing them for us.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? I think you're good to go.
Good to go.
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Next up is the review, the 2,000 policies. If you guys want to take a second.
One hour.
I think an hour and a half.
Have we got a 4:30?
It cut me down there. If we, you guys want to take a break for a couple of minutes?
Yes.
All right. Let's take a five-minute break and get back here quick.
This point sound like I'm having to jog my memory of like, okay. Um, I wrote in here, missing early warning system section. I don't know. Let me pull up in the Neola. Does it have something about that? My note may not make any sense to me right now. Oh yeah, there's a whole section.
So there's
There it is.
There's a There's the part about waivers. We're in 2120, right?
Yeah.
In Neola, there's a specific list of, um...
Yep.
Things that can
Carl Perkins, General Education.
Right, right, right. And so, um, it just gives the list rather than just saying, it's saying the same thing, but the Neola version is a little more specific. And it talks about the superintendent is authorized to waive those, rather than ours says the board is authorized to waive.
So what she's saying is, is that Neola's more specific and includes it. Are we good to go?
Yeah.
I think we should update it to match Neola. I mean...
Yep, I think so too. I would say that we adopt the Neola version, which is more updated, has more specific points on the waivers.
Do we want any other things in the early warning system because it's, all right, we need to look at this one for a second. Sorry.
No, 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 I'm here.
Paul, are you familiar? Maybe this is, uh, I don't wanna, Jane's waving her hand. That early warning system, is that something you can shed some light on for us? Yes. Is that okay, Ms. Han? If she, okay, thank you. I don't, I don't wanna, I'm not doing any volunteering today, but if you can shed some light, that would help. Because I'm sure we're already doing it. We just may not have it written down in policy.
So it's statutorily required, excuse me. I was on a Bureau of School Improvement meeting this morning and learned there's going to be more changes to the school improvement process. Where they're going to take the federal index and add that component. So they're re, the state currently is rewriting the template because of a audit that was found for the state of Florida. And so they're trying to just, they did not even have the details. They're gonna have them in June and add that to the school improvement template that will be coming forth for next year.
So this might be something that we update, but let's wait, let's push this one out long enough for everybody to catch up.
I think we'll, we'll be updating it again based on what I learned this morning, is that they're going to be adding the, um, the subgroup data in a more monitoring piece of the school improvement process. We monitor our subgroup data, but it's not part of the state template, and we follow the state template.
Okay. So should we table this one until it comes back in June? Because otherwise, we're gonna have to go right back in.
I think the idea would be, we wanna adopt the Neola piece, right? But in the event that there's other ones that come on, if you'll bring something forward when that happens, that's perfect.
So Neola will adjust the template.
If the state changes in June, Neola will probably issue their update.
Okay.
August, September is.
Perfect. As long as, as long as we're within compliance, we're good.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, next up, 2125.
I got notes written on this one.
School Advisory Councils for School Improvement and Accountability. All right.
One of the things that is listed on the first section here for the School Advisory Council, um, there's not, it says that we review, but it doesn't really, we review membership, but how often are we reviewing membership? I don't know if we should put something in there to that effect.
Oh, there's, and there's, yep.
Because it...
Where are you?
I'm in the second paragraph. The Board shall review the membership composition of each advisory council, but it doesn't say when or how. I mean, so it's, we shall review when.
So a couple of years ago, I asked if we could get all of the SIP plans, the, the school improvement plans that are passed, right, that are, that come out of each one of the schools. And, um, I asked, so what they do is, is they create a database and we log in and we can click on each school improvement plan. And basically, that's the roadmap that that school feels is appropriate for student achievement and everything else. It's, it, it exists right now. You can go look at the school improvement plans for all of them. Ms. Klein's coming, or, go ahead.
The school improvement timeline, once we attend the June training from the state, we'll establish a timeline and when everything is due. We send you that timeline and then the, uh, school improvement plans come to you for approval, for final approval. You have approximately two, three weeks to go through and make any suggestions, bring them back to us, and then we take them back to the school. So every school, like currently, as Mr. Susan just said, currently, you can look at any school improvement plan in our district.
Okay.
But the school bases their, um, goal based on their student data.
And is that, that is looked at annually? Is that, how often is that done?
Every summer.
Okay.
It shows up on a board, um...
Board agenda item.
In September?
October-ish.
And, and that document will list the members of the SAC for every school. So that, at that time, we would be, that's when we approve or review, as this policy says. Ours is the same, ours is, Neola hasn't updated theirs since this one was, by the way.
And I think, I think, um, if you look at this, uh...
This one talks about, yeah.
The advisory council, the SACs, what, what that is, is there's, there's some statutory opportunities for us to create more of a collaboration between the board and some of our advisory committees. If you read the statutes, it talks about how that's kind of under our jurisdiction to work with them because they're kind of our, our wing into the schools. So I was, once we get that update and we get to that process, I may ask all of us to create like a mini advisory team from the schools that comes and just advises, you know, talks to us. Is, um, and gives us updates as to what's going on inside the schools, so. With that, I think we're good on this, right? Is everybody okay? Does anybody have any up, anything else that they would like to add to it?
I mean, are we gonna implement the Neola template? Because again, we don't have a, a conflict dispute resolution process that's tied to this policy here. I'm sure we have one maybe somewhere else, but...
Hang on just a second, because one of the things...
Ours has additional stuff that's not in Neola, so it's gonna be, do you want Neola's template, or do you wanna add what we don't have from Neola's template into what we've created?
Right, um...
Yeah, I feel like the resolution piece is missing from ours.
So ours, um, speaks about the school recognition funds. I don't see that on Neola's. It speaks about the annual budget. I don't see that on Neola's.
I thought we had a policy about SAC and I'm not finding it, so, um...
We did. It was referenced. There's some statutory.
Yeah, about school improvement plans. I thought we had a, um, I thought we had a policy on school improvement plans, so.
Well, this one in here, Under Duties, it says school improvement
Yep.
Plan process.
So we may need to add some things, is that...
I think what you said was correct in that anything that's inside the Neola template that we don't already have, Paul, would be something that we could add, and then that would...
If that's the direction, we can just take what we, what Neola has in their template and we don't have in ours and add it into ours.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I can't see a reason why we would take either one of these out. It's only a couple of things
Yeah.
that we have additionally that Neola doesn't. Does anybody see any reason that we should not have those?
Good. All right. If you follow that one there, Paul. Next one's 2131, um, educational goals. Uh, this is, uh, if you pull up the Neola template, it might be a little bit different.
Neola has a 2128 that we do not have.
You're right. District Advisory Council.
Because we don't have a district advisory council.
This is what, this is what it speaks to inside the statutes.
Is this something the district's ever had?
No. So it's pretty cool, if you look at it, right?
Yeah, I mean, I could see the benefit of
Yep.
implementing one of these.
Mm-hmm.
What does the board feel like?
I like it. And if you read some of the statutes regards to the SAC committees and stuff like that, it calls for some of this kind of involvement. You guys wanna discuss it? Do you guys wanna table it? Because it's a big, big, big one and we come back to it?
I mean, I think we can talk about it. I think we should talk about it now over here.
All right, let's do it.
I think it's, um, I'm not necessarily saying a hundred percent table it, or that I'm against it or for it, but, uh, I think implementing something like that would be an important conversation after a superintendent is hired as well.
I don't know. It's pretty simple. I mean, parents, students, community members. I mean, I don't know if a superintendent would have anything to do with telling us, no, we don't want students, so.
Yeah, the only thing is if we were going to give him part of it, so if we were gonna ask the superintendent to appoint anybody, um, but again, I don't think that that's...
Controversial.
I think we can have a group like this with or without a policy, right? I mean, so it's kind of a decision to do it, but, you know, one of the challenges that we have when we have district-wide committees like this is the, you know, the, the distance people have to travel, the involvement, so I, I wonder if rather than one centralized, um, group that's, we can make it however big we want, because it, you know, leaves blanks, this many, you know, leaves blank, this many parents, this many students, um...
You're talking about going to a regional type?
Or like, yeah, each district has their own kind of, is that what you're thinking?
I don't know. I mean, because then, because, no, because then we kinda start getting segmented. I don't know. I, I
It's okay.
I wouldn't really write it for this conversation today, just to be honest, so. I'm not, I, you know, like Ms. Jenkins, not opposed to it, I just, um, you talked earlier about how we have a lot to do.
Well, I, I think that this is basically our backbone. If we have, I, I, I actually love the idea of bringing parents, students, community members, and teachers and them to talk to us on a regular basis. I mean, I, I have, um, my former students that are now having kids, so it's kinda interesting. So I, I, I just, I think that this is something that I'd like to do. I mean, if you guys wanna sit here for a second and pound through it, I'd love to put something like this together, but if you're having some concerns and, uh, either way, I'm okay with it.
What would be the, what, I'm trying to look down to see the purpose, because I'm, what I'm seeing is we're going, here's who's gonna be on the committee, here's how they're gonna be selected.
Yep.
Um, you know, in different ways. It can come from SACs or it can be, come from whatever, but there's really no definition. Oh, it says the purpose of the DAC will be to advise
With regard to the development.
With strategic plan.
Especially in regard to goals. It looks pretty good.
Right, um, as, to serve as a major communication link between the district, the schools, and the community.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so basically to kinda help be that. We had, we had that, we have that in place with all the community ambassador groups, which were on a much, much larger scale, actually, because we had we had faith-based, a faith-based community ambassador group. We had the chambers and the community ambassador group. We had employee of the year, all the previous employees of the year and the previous teachers of the year, those were ambassador groups. And sometimes it would be broken down, like, um, the superintendent would meet with, you know, regionally, everybody from those groups here, or sometimes be, I'm just gonna pull in all the faith-based today, whatever, and, and throw out the idea. And they were very involved in the making, the recreation of the strategic plan and with its update. And so that was kind of on a much larger, uh, scale. Um, and something honestly, in whether formal or informal, needs to continue to happen. So this is kind of getting it more specific and saying, this is the way we wanna get the community input, is through this, and I think, um...
That other one didn't report to us or collaborate with us. It was more about collaborating with Dr. Mullins and staff and stuff like that, so.
Well, I mean, we can have it do whatever we wanted to, but I'm saying, we had community groups, large groups of, you know, into, I, you know, I think Tammy can probably commit, it's about 300 total in the 225, and those community, um, sorry, ministerially speaking, um, who were involved in, in getting their input, in whether meetings or, uh, you know, digitally or whatever, virtual meetings, all different kinds of ways. So, you know, there's, there's lots of ways to do it. I don't know that we, um, have to limit it to this.
Was there ever a formal document that they said, these are the strategic initiatives that we would like, you know, I think it was just inputted to staff and then staff took what they said and moved through it, something like that, right?
No, actually, I think he usually met with them himself and would put out, here's some, you know, first, it was a listening tour, you know, what are the, what are the priorities? What do you think you're gonna be working on? Taking all the input. I remember he sat down with each of us as board members and went through actually over multiple one-on-ones because the list was so long. What do you think about this? Where is this on your priority? This is, what's this what I'm hearing from the community? You know, formulated that, yes, with staff, with a strategic plan, but, you know, one of the things that, in the past, the superintendent, going back to Dr. Blackburn, and maybe previous, I don't, I'm not familiar, developed a strategic, strategic plan. If we're gonna move into where the board has more ownership of the strategic plan, we can do that. But that community input is still really important. And then when there were going to be changes or updates, it would, you know, he would go back out to the same people and say, here's where we are, and they give you a report card of where we are and what, what am I hearing from you? It was just more informal, um, but definitely going out with those strategic plan points.
All right. I, I like this opportunity because it keeps it to a smaller, tight-knit group to give us, um, direction, and if the new superintendent would like to come in and create what that was before, I think that'd be a good idea, too.
I don't necessarily disagree though with Ms. Jenkins on this, maybe saying that we talk to our new superintendent and, and have them involved in this process, because it may be a collaboration of what we had and then this policy together to kinda come up with what the new superintendent wants.
Or they might have an even better idea.
They might even have a better idea. They might.
We good? All right. Then we'll pause it. Let's go on to the next one, which is...
Oh, wait, education course.
We're forgetting to go back to the Neola one. Alrighty, 2131, Educational Outcome.
One's ours, so it's shorter. Which one's ours?
2131-V1.
This is one of the ones that is, unless we see, this is one of the ones that has been, um, reviewed within the last five years, and we would need to come back to it next year on our continual rotation, but this one was updated in 2018.
So we're within the five years.
Yeah, or we could just update it now and not worry about it. So if you guys take a look at V1 and V2, a little bit of differences here. One is, like Ms. Jenkins said, almost exactly like what we have. And if there's anything anybody wanted to add, they could. I have a couple of things that I might wanna suggest. V1 goes, I think, a little more in-depth.
Yeah, looks like it.
But it's up to you guys. What I, my, my concern was, is that I wanted to be able to put, I didn't see anything in here, capacities for fulfilling, satisfying, outstanding, understanding the ability to cope with change, like all of those things. How about like understanding the workforce and ensuring the success, like, understanding what the workforce needs are and what their opportunities are? I, I see the first one, job skills for the workplace and skills and attitudes to obtain further education. Um, I don't know.
Sorry, give me a minute. I'm going through them. I'm telling you, if we implement version one, that scares me a bit, just because I'm, I mean, honestly, if you look at some of these questions, they're all really great life skills that our students all should come out of our schools with. I can speak to the fact that I work with youth every single week, and there's a lot of these skills that our students do not have.
Push it.
Yeah.
These are goals, these are goals. I, I'm looking at the statutes that they come from. Actually, some of these are kinda spelled out.
Yep.
I really like version one. It's very detailed, but I, I like version one.
I like it, too.
I just think, what, would it look like if every one of our students came out of our schools with these skills?
Or at, at least we set that expectation, right? So. Lead your time.
I know. I'm like, some of these are really good skills, but I'm like, wow, this would be...
Um, anybody else wish to, there's a, kind of a thing on the floor saying, let's go with version one. Are we okay with that?
Does anybody object to version, version one?
Anybody wanna tie into it? Ms. Campbell, you okay with it?
I, to be quite honest, I didn't look at the version one.
You wanna take a second and...
I don't make decisions like that, Mr. Susan. I'm happy for us to have to bring it back to us and let's take a look at them, you know, and, um, I mean, I don't see anything, just looking, browsing through it that I think is like, oh no, I don't want our kids to learn that, you know, I mean...
Yeah.
So you'd like to, uh, say, go ahead and move forward with V1, and then if there's any, uh, conversations that you may have or concerns, you can address them as it goes through the process, right?
Sure.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Ms. Jenkins?
Yep.
Okay. All right. 2132. So these are education process goals. Um, again, the Neola template has been modified in 2003, but it goes back, the original one, looks like we have almost all of them. The one thing that I was gonna mention is, is that there's, uh, not a real strict, um, educational process goals. It says instruction, you know, needs and interest of students and all that stuff, and, but there's nothing talking about the relationship of, uh, parents and students and stuff like that, and then I didn't know if anybody wanted to add something, constructive cooperation with parents and community groups? I guess that's okay, but it just doesn't mean that, doesn't tell me like the parent, like, listen to the needs and parents and accept input on their child for the success of the student. But these are kinda overall process goals.
It mentions parents in F.
It does, but it's not...
What was your suggestion as far as changing that?
Just, just a more specific thing about parents, but, you know, like, you're talking about educational process goals, and we're talking about collaborating with parents, and then we have in there constructive cooperation with parents and community groups. Just feels like it's kinda part of something else, but it, it, it can be there. And we have a whole Parents' Bill of Rights that we can make it. You know what I mean? So, so if you guys are okay, I'm okay. We can just draw this thing.
I'm okay with this one. I didn't mark this one alone.
Yep.
We're good?
2132's good.
All right, Paul, just update it. We're good to go. And the next one is, is 2205, Instructional Planning refers to three statutes. Our old one referred to three statutes. The new one only refers to one. Kinda weird.
They're not different, right?
No, it's exactly the same, but the old one in our book refers to two other statutes.
Yeah, but I wrote down on mine, so it looks like the statute, for statute 1001.11, speaking about the Commissioner of Education, so I had a question mark and I wrote that, because I was like, I don't know why this statute is cited here.
It's probably why they cleaned it up.
And then statute 1008.385 speaks about educational planning and info systems, so I wrote down notes on those, which I'm thinking, maybe I was looking at the statute thinking this doesn't really correlate to what we're speaking about, which might be why they decided to take them out of there.
So this version is exactly like, um, exactly like the one we have, so if you guys are okay, we can move on.
Yeah, I'm... Do we need to, so, do we need to?
Do we need to remove the statutes that are on there?
Is that a technical change? I think I've asked that question before.
I'll look.
If it's not needed, Paul, you can get rid of them.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, is there any harm in citing a statute that literally pertains
Nothing.
Nothing to this policy?
It's just misleading, so.
Yeah, let's get rid of it.
If I can get rid of it technically, I'll do it. If not, I'll leave it until we get an update.
Neola updates it and says they don't need it, so we can just get rid of it.
The third statute is, is relevant. It's just the one about the commissioner. Yeah, the first, yeah.
We're on 2210. Are we good to leave that one as is?
Yeah, the, the one we were just on? Yes. We are on 2210, Curriculum Development. It's pretty, if you look at this, it's pretty, the only difference we would do is, is superintendent may make progress reports to the board periodically or annually. I think we've chosen periodically, and then...
There's requirements in here from updated state statute, I believe, in order to report back to the Florida Department of Education.
Sure.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this one was updated in 2022, so I'm gonna assume that some of that is, um...
For the most part, all of the language is pretty much the same, except for those updates.
Yeah, so I, we need to update this so that we have the updated requirements.
Is there any reason that we picked periodically as opposed to annually?
Because it's more frequent.
More frequent? I mean...
Progress reports as far as curriculum development?
No, if you guys wanna put annually or periodically, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, it doesn't mean it's less than annually.
It's one of those words that's subject to interpretation, like ongoing, which you're like, well, annually could be ongoing, or every two years could be ongoing, you know, it's...
I mean, we've, we've been getting them twice a year, specifically, this is not curriculum updates, but academic achievement updates and all those things, at least twice a year, so.
So then do we wanna put that, so that it's, that reflects what we would like to see?
I remember.
Yeah.
I mean, if you wanna, I mean, I don't wanna go back to the RISD's policy for only changing that one phrase, but if we wanna change it at least annually, you know, or whatever, you know, I mean, it's, I mean, I'm not gonna...
What do you guys want?
Getting a roll over that.
We gotta change the whole thing anyway. It's gonna come before us, so if you only add a couple of words, it's okay.
What are we changing the, the rest of it? Because that's, that's the only thing I really s, I mean, it looks like the rest of it all...
Where was the reporting thing that you?
It's on the bottom of the, of the first page, where, are you talking about that, where it says, where we select? If we would like it annually or periodically?
I'm okay with annually or periodically, or at least in front of, and then check annually. Uh, it doesn't matter to me.
I, I think we're focusing on semantics too much. I think the word periodically leaves it open. The board's in charge of the superintendent. If you don't like that they're not reporting something to you enough, you, you can tell them to report it.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm not seeing, you were talking about a change earlier about reporting, oh, no, I see it. I see that, the, the first one on the second page, annually a date determined by the FDOE.
Yeah.
District shall submit a board-approved K-12 comprehensive reading plan to the department for the specific use.
That's new statute.
Yeah, okay. Based upon a root cause analysis.
We're good?
That's the change.
Yep, we're good. Say we will take the Neola update and check annually? Is that what we wanna do?
Well, I think we need a consensus, so it doesn't, I mean, whatever everyone wants.
To me, periodically means more often, or gives room for more often.
Yeah.
So I think, yeah, I think periodically is better than annually.
You okay with that?
I'm fine with it.
All right. Moving on from 2210, we're gonna take the Neola update, onto 21, 22, hang on, let me make sure there's nothing in between there. Yep, 2215.
So this one we have updates on.
Yep. Have you guys had a chance to look at the two options?
There's only one option, isn't there?
No, there, there's two different options within the one version.
Oh, 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 okay, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't clarify. Yep.
This policy is actually going to be revised with new legislation that's passing, so.
Do you wanna pause on this until we get it? Because we're just gonna have to redo it anyway.
You're gonna have to redo it.
Yeah, tons of this is gonna end up being changed after the session.
Paul, are you okay with that? Take this one, pause it, and bring it back? All right, great point, guys, moving through these. All right. So we're next is 2216.
They don't...
Gifted education. Looks like we made our own, and Neola has nothing. This is a first.
And we did extensive work on this.
And I looked at it, and I said, this is great.
This might be the longest policy we have.
And we created our own.
No, it's not. The financial policy that Cindy brought us a couple of years ago is the longest policy that we have. I haven't actually looked, but I remember, you remember Cindy, when we did that? It was, it's very long. It's even longer than charter school policy.
We'll get there.
But it's in like the eight thousand, so we have a lot.
I looked through it. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, no, I don't have this one marked up at all.
So I'll just give you, I mean, one of the things that we did in that was to, to screen, one, just we're screening all kids in second grade, so you kind of removed that. You know, either the parent had to say, I think my kid's gifted, or the teacher had to say, we're, we're doing that initial screening for everybody in the second grade, and just trying to open that up, make it a little more equitable, but we did a lot of work on that. I'm not saying I'm not willing to do a lot of work again, but I think we have, that, we have a good one there.
Yeah.
All right, we're good. All right, moving on, 2220, Adoption of Courses of Study.
They haven't, they haven't changed anything since 2002.
Is there anything in here regarding financial literacy and the implementation of that? Let me look, sorry.
I don't know that it gets specific to the actual courses of study.
Okay.
Right, right.
Yeah, it just talks about what's required within them and for them to be presented.
Right, right. If you're, if we're gonna do something new, it has to have all these things.
Okay.
We're okay?
Yep.
It's exactly the same, right?
Yep.
Okay. Paul, show it. Updated 2230 on this one. Is there something on Neola? Nope. There we go. Course guides. All right, 2230, Course Guides. Seems to be in line with, almost identical to what it was.
I know, but like, I know I'm trying to like...
It adds H.
So... Usually it's spread out.
Yeah, so, um, when you look at the bottom section of it, we don't have anything selected there. for the, alright, so it says the superintendent shall be responsible for the preparation of course guides and may establish administrative procedures related to the preparation, but then it looks like we, we should've selected one of those two options, right?
Or both.
I, I don't think it's a have-to, they would've told us if we had to.
Where are you?
At the bottom.
The bottom, where there's a check.
Shouldn't be responsible for the preparation of course guides of the Neola version.
Of existing guides shall be submitted to the board for approval. I like that.
Twenty-two, we're still there. I thought we left that.
Before they are implemented, yeah.
Sorry.
I think both, I, I can't see a disadvantage to having but, all of those in the policy.
I agree.
Do we, have we done that before? Course guides submit to this, to the board for approval? No? Ah? They're all online?
Yeah, that's why it's not checked.
I think it should be added to the policy for the board to review it.
Jean?
Yep.
Okay. Jess, how about you guys? Any objections to adding it? Red flags?
Does that mean we need to go back and approve all of the course guides that we have?
No, it says new. It says new.
It says all new courses. And revisions of existing, so, yeah. If they're all online, I guess we don't need to keep them in a file in the office of the superintendent.
Yeah, that's really outdated.
It's definitely 2002.
That's very outdated.
Oh, come on.
We can, I mean, I'm a paper girl, I like to have things that I can flip through and write on and make notes.
People can go online and print them out.
Yeah.
But what if the internet fails?
Oh.
Alright, so check the first one in its sub-box, before they're implemented. Get rid of the copies on all current course guides. We're good to go?
Hold on, I, I'm just, I don't know about the before they're implemented thing, cause that is gonna pose a barrier very likely in terms of timing of meetings and things to that have to get rolling and the last-minute changes that often our state makes as they walk to the podium. I think they're gonna say all of that as well.
Well, sort of. Yeah, all the curriculum guides are online. We review them every single summer and make adaptive changes based on changes of state statute, course code guides, things like that. Super transparent, more than happy to put them in front of the board. Timing in terms of before implemented, implemented might be a little difficult. They basically get redone every summer and then rolled out, redone minor changes, but it would fall under that language. We'd certainly put them on a board agenda, it's not a problem, but it might be difficult to say before they're used because they're a resource for our teachers.
So would there be anything that would stop you from just put, I guess, putting them in front of the board during the summer meeting for us to review them and then if there were any issues with them? I don't, it's just like there would be, but...
We, we also get teacher input to what they want changed. For example, the ELA, the pacing curriculum guides, those are all going to be some revisions this summer again.
Right.
So the timing is the issue, because we will finish them the last, middle of July for August, so, but absolutely we'll bring them to, to you, but...
Under consent, we imagining, just for process?
I, I think putting the before implementation piece puts a really big barrier and burden on our staff and it takes the fluidity out of a very fluid, active document that should naturally have revisions when things aren't going well or do need to be changed because they're mandated. But it doesn't stop it from coming before us whenever most likely available right after. I don't, I, I think that's a burden that we're gonna put on our staff for no reason.
And I guess the only thing, the only reason I have pause about this again is because of us being responsible for all curriculum, like, you know, statutorily, we're, we are, so I would like to review it and if there is an issue...
No problem.
Alright, thank you.
Right, they, we, we'll, we'll get them to you.
You can even just send me an email and...
Well, I think...
We don't mind at all.
Yeah.
We, we actually like that it's public and clear.
Yeah.
Direct a lot of families to the site, it's not a problem at all.
Ms. Hand has this meeting twice a week for the rest of the year, so we'll be fine. Plenty of opportunities to bring it forward.
For the rest of the year? Twice a week? Wait, wait, wait a minute, I'm about to throw a mark at you. So maybe it would be helpful, I think it would be helpful to me, when we're talking about these course guides, are we talking about what you shared, Ms. Klein, about the, like, the pacing guide? Are we talking about a pacing guide? Are we talking about, we're going to have a new course, like, I mean, it doesn't say course of study, but I mean, in this, well, it does say course of study, but are, are we, are we talking, like, if we're gonna have a new class offered that you're handing, I don't know that I, I don't know that the board really wants to see you adjusted the pacing guide because it was going too fast. I, I, I don't think we need to approve that, or we had some event, so we need to slow it down. I don't know that that's what this policy is asking, so, I mean, but, so I, I think we need to get it, get down to what is, that the board wants to see before it gets started and what way do we wanna see it? Do we want it to have to come before a meeting and we're going to approve it? Or do we're just saying, are we just saying, make us aware?
I, I would say it says board for approval, and then when you're looking at course guides, what do you, what do you, what is that envisioned in your mind? I know it's not the pacing guide.
So they're a little different, so if you went to our social studies webpage...
Yep.
You would see a link for each of the courses.
Yep.
So civics, US history, economics, you would see some curriculum resources, some guides in pacing, some ancillary supports, to ways to address diverse learners, like our students with disabilities, how to modify the curriculum. Do see all kinds of things in a math, you're gonna see a lot more pacing just because that's inherently math. In ELA, you're gonna see our specialists have pulled and add depth to what's in the curriculum. So they're all a little different depending on the course. Super easy for us to link to all of that if that is sufficient in a board agenda, and we can, you know, put a little new or, you know, updated or not updated next to it or something like that. Really like our public viewing them, giving feedback on them, so it, it's not a problem at all. It just, the, the problem will be the language on the prior to implementation, given it's mostly just supplemental content or sequenced content. Honestly, it's a little easier to put them all.
Okay, so...
We can, we can get to yes anywhere. My, why one pause would be, it may not perfectly be before school starts, from when they finish to when we can give you guys an update, but I don't see why by not early August.
And the other, the other layer of that is, is that they're not gonna teach the entire course on the first day. So, you, you see what I mean? So like, whereas we're saying, before you start, well, if, you know, the first week and a half is just basically finding the bathroom and telling them how to write their names at the top of the paper half the time, right? So I think we're in a good place if we can get to there.
Not my class, maybe your class, not my class.
Ms. Campbell, Ms. Campbell, like, seriously, like, let's just talk about the first week of school.
They're, they're guides for teachers and some are used much more closely, particularly our new teachers, others less. Our veteran teachers are less dependent on those guides. We ask them to review them for mandatory content. There's a lot of mandatory content in our state, so...
So, I, I guess, I mean, I'm okay with removing the before they're implemented. If they go on the agenda, then at least, honestly, that will help with our public engagement to seeing these changes and revisions, so I think that that's a win-win all the way around.
Yeah, we agree.
What do you guys think?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, to not put the before...
Before they're implemented, but for us to be able to review it.
Yeah, cause I, I think it's contradictory too by putting the implemented, because ultimately, this is the role and responsibility of the superintendent. Adding that first checkmark is just putting another eye on it, but if we put the implemented, I think it's taking the responsibility away from the superintendent.
Well, I think it's doing us.
Okay, moving on.
Paul, do you have direction?
Yep.
Alright, moving on, twenty-two...
Oh, boy.
Hang on a second, I gotta make sure, twenty-two-forty. Controversial issues!
Woo! Alright, here we go.
It's actually not a very controversial policy.
I know.
I know, it's really not.
It's pretty benign.
I know.
Actually, I, so every year I teach the Teacher Leadership Academy, Linda Buffum has invited me to do that. I just did it last week, and this is the policy I used to use, give them as an example. But it's, it's pretty tame. And Neola hasn't updated theirs since 2002.
I think this is also gonna be one that's going to change with, my computer's logging me out for some reason, sorry, um, legislation to some degree, this...
Ours is actually, am I on the right one? Ours is longer.
It's just broken up.
Is it just the formatting?
It's just making it, it's making it very clear and separate that parents can have concerns and communicate that and stuff.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
So are we okay with just telling Paul, hey, listen, anything that's not inside there from the first Neola, or from the Neola update, but we keep our, our, our policy here?
Yeah, I don't, our, our policy is actually stronger than the Neola's policy, so...
If that's okay, and then in the event that something happens that updates it, it'll come forward to us with other ones.
Yeah.
We're good with that, Paul?
This one's also been done in the last five years.
Yep.
Ms. Campbell, you're excited to find those ones that have been...
I was just gonna say, like, like, it's good to do them now, though, so we don't have to go through this.
I counted, there's twenty-three. I'm like, there's twenty-three.
Okay, so...
Alright, so we're good, twenty-two-fifty, innovative program, you mean to tell me we don't have it?
We do not. We have many innovative programs.
Unless it's somewhere else.
Right. I, I truly believe we don't need this, when I was looking at it. You know, it basically puts handcuffs on, any, any innovative program has to put all of these things together, in-service requirements, assessment, it just, it's not needed. We okay with that?
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, moving on, twenty-two-sixty.
I think our policy looks significantly different than Neola's I wrote, so I need to look at. This is the trouble with looking at these two months ago, cause now I'm like, I don't remember. Alright, we just updated this one last year. Oops.
No way, trees, damn me, saved by printing them in size four font?
It was just so this didn't look quite so bad when you're like, oh. Alright. So...
I think this is one that we can do, is add anything that Neola suggests and keep any of the stuff that we have, if you guys are feeling comfortable with that.
There's lots of options.
Yeah. I mean, like the, what was this, the...
So our policy like kinda picks up towards the...
Compliance officers.
Middle of page two or something, it's like, it's like we missed the whole first page or something. Alright, anyone? The board does not, alright, so... So...
Again, this is something that clearly has been updated by the legislation-changing last session. I don't see the oppressive comment. Oppressive, hold on, give me a second.
Can you search, search the page? Is it on that ours or theirs?
Ours.
Alright.
Which I think is new, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, it looks like we took the first paragraph and then we opted for the second option on this one.
Yeah.
Any suggestions?
Give me a minute, sorry, this one's a long one, this is an eleven-pager. We found a longer policy.
Paul, do you wanna make any suggestions to, to us on that Neola?
I can go through and scan for anything that's been added since we did and added into ours that we don't have.
Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah.
When, when I was looking through it, it pretty much just follows... Are you okay with that, Ms. Campbell? Bring it back to us?
Um, sure.
Okay, Mr. Trent, we're good?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. Moving on. Twenty-two, let's see what the next one is. Make sure I don't miss one here. Twenty-two-sixty-oh-oh-one.
Alright, this is...
Alright, so there seems to be this ADA thing.
Well, this looks like a... Ours has appeal process procedures, this looks like.
What are you looking at?
We're at twenty-two-sixty-point-oh-one. Our policy is different than theirs.
Oh, yeah. Ours is not about five-oh fours and...
Is that you?
This was a part of a whole package that we did together last year on anti-harassment and non-discrimination. We did a whole group of policies kind of all at the same time.
So, do we need to... I mean, it looks like we obviously need to add this twenty-two-sixty-point-oh-one to match what theirs is and maybe renumber ours? I'm trying to see if this is maybe in a future.
So I don't, I don't see...
Is this the same thing as the other one?
No. So my, my gut feeling is twenty-two-sixty-point-oh-one from Neola is law.
Is wrong?
No, it's law. I mean, it's not, I don't think we need a policy on it.
Yeah. But ours looks a lot, this looks a lot like law too, so the anti-harassment and non-discrimination appeal procedures.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, but the numbers for sure need to be fixed.
Changed? Okay, so should we add in Neola's twenty-two-sixty-point-oh-one and then change the number of ours to point-oh-two?
I think Neola has a point-oh-two as well and a point-oh-three.
Say what?
No, that's...
No, that's sixty-one, you're looking, I'm saying twenty-two-sixty-point-oh-two.
Yeah, we can get them to renumber ours to be oh-two.
Okay, and then add in their twenty-two-sixty-point-oh-one? Cause we do not have, I mean, there's actually parts of this that are in our twenty-two-sixty-point-oh-one.
I'll go with your direction. You got the gavel from here. I'm gonna go use the restroom real quick.
Okay. What's the thoughts of the board? What's the thoughts of the board?
So the, the compliance officers have, this is, is this just five oh fours?
This is all federal stuff, so we, we do it.
I was trying to see if we had one somewhere else.
Yeah, we have a compliance officer piece.
Right, okay. Specifically four five oh fours?
Yeah, and it talks about you're having to name them and everything and we do that, so.
Do we have a separate mail one and a voicemail one? I saw that somewhere in there. I'm not sure what the point of that is.
Well, depending on. On the event that took place and you may want.
Oh.
You know.
Yeah, yeah. So we'd need to look at this.
Yeah.
We, I'm not seeing anything, just in a cursory glance, that we have, we don't have any policies labeled five oh four. We have lots of policies that talk about five oh.
To adopt their twenty-two sixty point oh one and then rename ours.
I think we're probably gonna run into ours somewhere else. Oh, because ours, this is just the appeal procedures.
Yeah, ours is the appeal procedures.
For the policy before, yeah.
Yes.
Yep, yeah.
So what do you guys think?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Ms. Jenkins?
Yeah, that's fine, I just, I feel like we have it somewhere, but.
Mr. Trent? Okay.
Yeah.
Does our, does our, is there so much of a separate process, Paul, that, that what we have in twenty-two sixty will not cover? Because this is still about discrimination.
Right, I haven't done a line item, there might be things in as required by federal.
Yeah, I mean, this does, because this speaks specifically to somebody with a disability, look at paragraph number two of this twenty-two sixty point oh one.
There's probably a lot of overlap in how we handle it.
Okay.
Okay, so, moving on.
Where are we at?
Are we good?
Twenty-two sixty-one.
I think we got through that, we're gonna rename this one, we're at twenty-two sixty-one.
Alright, twenty-two sixty-one, if you go to the top of it, Title One Services. When I looked at it, I didn't see anything that was concerning. Seems like we had pretty much all of the options there. If everybody's okay with it, I didn't see, the only thing I didn't see on there was the F portion, which is in ours, simultaneous services. If you guys are okay with Paul updating it to include anything that may not be in there that we currently have, because if you look down at F.
Yeah.
Okay? So, if you guys are okay with that, we can move on.
Yep, were you saying F?
Oh, ours. On our policy, we have simultaneous services.
That's okay?
Yeah, and we, there's actually, there's something in, under, I don't know, it's absolutely necessary, but under participation, there, there's, they've got a couple of extra things in there.
So update this one to match Neola's then and still keep our simultaneous services?
Or at least have staff take a look at it, yeah.
Okay.
Good? Alright, two-two six-one zero one, parent participation.
And, because we had this conversation where there were only a few staff members in the room, even though they were probably watching from their offices, just to clarify, because it looks like we're dumping a whole bunch of policies. I believe the direction of the board is as we can get to it. If there's some that we come, like we did with the remote work and say, we need to do this, we need to do this now, but everything else is as we, because we, you know, it's not like you guys aren't working on anything else, so.
Alright, so parent participation and Title One programs is what is.
This is a good, if you guys read it, it's really good.
Yeah.
It talks about the development of all those other things. We, I wanted to say that there's been some push to possibly use like, we could get more parent participation with some of these if we were to try to get some sort of like a mobile fingerprinting to the actual locations, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, that would be tremendous.
We have one, we have, we have two, actually.
The problem we have is is that our staff getting out there and doing it, you know what I mean?
Right, because it, only certain people can do it, and so, but we do have, because I asked for them, we have, we have, but then COVID hit, they like, we literally.
So how do you get those mobile fingerprinting services to your school, because I would love to know, acquiring minds would love to know.
Ms. Han, we've, I've sent her an email and they're looking into it.
We're looking at it. Okay.
The problem we don't.
To be determined.
The problem we had before is district security was having to do it, and then it was, they were on a, you know, didn't have the availability of many people, then we had COVID, so I think now they're collaboratively looking at how to do that.
Or even if we were able to just set up a, one in each of our districts, you know, periodically, that would probably be tremendous as helping some of our volunteers.
I agree. We'll do what we can, thank you.
Yes.
I just have to highlight while we have the opportunity is, you know, one of the ladies who works in the office who does that is a volunteer for them, she's an amazing volunteer, but.
In our district security office?
The thing is though, is that there wasn't enough, like, there was, there was a bandwidth concern, so I think Ms. Han is gonna put together an effective opportunity for it. So, if you guys are okay, the parent participation in Title One programs is really cool, I feel okay that if we can pass the updated version that we have from Neola, it feels pretty good.
Ours is the same.
Yeah, it's the same.
Yeah, ours is the same.
Right, or whatever, I mean, it's a little different.
Our current one and point oh two are identical.
Yeah, so if we're okay with any changes that might be there, if it's not identical or just moving forward, we're good?
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, next one is two-two six-one point zero two, according to Ms. Jenkins, they are identical, so if everybody's okay.
And we updated it in twenty eighteen.
Yep.
We're good to go? Alrighty, moving on to twenty-two sixty-one point zero, let me make sure we don't have, yep, zero three, annual report requirements.
I wrote something on here and I don't know why I wrote it, because ours was more extensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, I. Yeah. I like ours.
Yep. I don't know why I wrote that.
I, I would say in this regard, if we can ask Paul to add anything that Neola has added into the original policy we have, but we have more that we require for ours than is required on that.
Yeah.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
We're gay with that? Alright, Paul, Paul, you good?
Yep.
Alright. Alrighty, moving on, I think the next one's twenty-two sixty-two.
We don't have Latchkey programs?
Well.
No, we don't call it that, so that's why we're, we have a version number two, which is again, identical.
We call those school age childcare, is that what you mean, or what, that's, what is?
Yeah, I think Latchkey's kind of a.
When I was a child.
Outdated, yeah.
It's what I was growing up.
Child of the eighties, or the nineties in some of our cases.
I was always in the Everglades, that's where I grew up. Alright, so if you look at twenty-two sixty-two version two, looks like.
It's the same.
Yep.
Yeah. Yep.
So you're just gonna mark that one reviewed?
Yep. Next up, twenty-two sixty-six. Non-discrimination on the basis of sex and education programs and activity.
This is another one that's gonna be updated with this legislative session, so.
Do you want to pause on this one until it gets updated?
I would say pause on this one, yeah.
Well, I mean, here's the thing, is we, we, they'll send us an update if it needs to be, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was updated last year as well.
Yeah, I, I feel confident that we just wait until they update it and then we get it back.
And the Title Nine regs are also being updated right now, so.
Yeah.
They're gonna change again, you know, with the federal.
Good, needs to be. Okay. Then we're good on that one, twenty-two seventy is the next one, according to our booklet.
Oh, I've read it.
Religion in the curriculum, there's, there's some things inside the statute that since this was here have been updated. So these are statutory law, it's not like I'm trying to add these things to it, but I really like them. Talks about the district board shall install, and this was what was really cool, the district school board may install the public schools in the district, a secular program of education, including but not limited to an objective study of the Bible and of religion. That's not in here, also, the district school board may provide that a brief period not to exceed two minutes for the purpose of silent prayer or mediation be set aside at the start of each school day and each week.
That's actually required by state statute that passed.
Yep.
The two, two minutes, one minute?
Two minutes.
I can't see from that far away.
Two minutes.
One minute of silence.
It, not to exceed two minutes, it's literally statute, I'm reading it from the statute, and then what was interesting was, is I pulled up another one that talks from the code law, and it had a couple of other additions to it that were interesting, but I think in this regard, religious in the curriculum, if, if we're gonna update it to include those things that I just spoke to, and. I think that's fair, anybody else have anything that they want to add to it?
No, I'm, I'm in favor of updating this policy, honestly, so I, yeah.
So it'd have to be our own updates, because Neola.
Yeah, it's just adding what is inside the statute to the actual policy.
I'm gonna need you to provide that and read that again.
Well, if you'll, if you'll go look at twenty-one zero zero three point four five, you'll see what I just read exact, and all I'm saying is, is that we should just add it to the actual, to the policy, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good?
I'm not good, I didn't say I was good.
Alright, well, if you want to look at the statute, I mean, it's not, it's just, it's law, so we spoke about this before, about adding certain things to the actual policy that are law, that are pertinent, I think this one is one that we could do. Alright.
So all we're deciding today is if we're going to update this policy or not, we're not deciding exactly what's gonna go in it and, and all that, that's what you're asking us.
No, I, I just, what it is, is we have this one, which is, we have the update from Neola, right, twenty-two seventy, and inside of it, it does not speak to those things that are inside of the Florida statute, which are related to this, and it's referred to, so what I'm saying is we just add those two components of one zero zero three point four five, and that's it, just add it to it.
Yeah.
We're good?
Go ahead and list in there the Constitution, the First Amendment, I, I mean, I don't, put it all in there, as far as I'm concerned.
That one's implied.
Yeah.
I did, I did click on the link, I mean, is it actually linking to the whole Constitution? It does, it's not the whole, it links to amendment.
But it links to it.
It links to.
Amendment one, First Amendment.
Yeah.
Alright, are we okay with that? Ms. Jenkins, have you taken a look at it?
Yeah, you skipped a couple of words, so I wanted to read those, so thank you.
Okay, okay, so twenty-two seventy, we're good on that, Paul, you know the direction on that one?
Yep.
Alright, twenty-two seventy-one, articulation and access. Is what our, to college system institutions.
Secondary enroll, ours is just titled.
Yeah, it's just, whatever, it's the same thing.
So I, I had a question on this one, in regards to the second paragraph where we are approving participation for students in grades ten, eleven, and twelve, and the question of why not add ninth grade if it's a possibility, Florida statute allows.
She's saying we need to change that.
No, it's okay, you're good, I, I can hear you, you're.
Yeah, there's, there's, this is one that we maintain, we already have our own order.
Okay. Yeah, six through twelfth is what Florida statute says.
And Neola's, it actually has a twenty twenty-three update, and, so I think this will probably, we need to put this on the hopper.
This one's on your radar, okay? Okay.
So, Paul, you want to meet with staff and?
Yeah, they'll get with you.
Okay, bring it back, okay, good? Haven't heard that in a long time.
Cool beans?
Yep, twenty-two eighty.
It's because I'm a child of the eighties.
Cool beans, he said cool beans.
Twenty-two eighty, used to work for a lady that, that's what she said all the time.
Okay, why, where are we at, alright, alright.
Physical education.
We go twenty-two.
Twenty-two eighty.
Hang on, what happened to twenty-two, twenty-three?
Well, we're, I mean, if you look at Neola.
We're missing some policies though.
We have a physical education.
They actually have two extra ones in between.
Okay.
This may be updated from, there's Florida statute references.
Yeah, we don't, do we not have this written in policy somewhere else, like further on in the book that I haven't got to?
We have a health committee, I don't know if we have a, do we have a physical education committee? SAC, okay.
What'd she say?
SAC, I think she's saying.
Shaq.
Shaq, like she's Phil O'Neal.
Phil O'Neal is coming, what, what are you saying?
We have a physical education committee in the district, meets in the sunshine with regularity, it's called Shaq.
Okay, cool, so in other words, we're already in compliance with the law, we just don't have a policy saying that we are.
We just have a policy, alright, so.
Or maybe we do and it's in somewhere else, I'm gonna.
I think we should implement the policy.
I agree.
Students nine through twelve should be required, alright, so I guess we need to establish the amount of credits in physical education.
They'll put that in there, staff will.
Staff will?
Yeah.
Because it says a minimum of one, but it's blank as though we're supposed to fill it in on this Neola template.
Let's make them all work out, tell them twelve.
Twenty-five.
Listen, listen.
We run it every day. Alright. If we're gonna move forward with this, are you guys okay with us offering it to staff to make that recommendation for credits? And then that way we can see it coming back? Are you okay that, with that, Ms. Campbell? I mean, if you move.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't, this one I didn't get through all the, because I was mainly looking at the ones that we had.
I don't like.
That's probably, I, just, you know, I can read really fast, I can't read this fast, but I do know, I was looking just at really briefly the middle school that you pick, you know, one class per one semester per year of physical education, but I know we've had in the past a PE waiver, so I'd want to make sure that we include that. Oh, yep, I see, there's a, for a waiver.
Is that PE waiver by law?
Um, I'm pretty sure it probably is.
I believe it mentions waivers somewhere, but I'd have to double check.
I mean, because I.
The waivers in the next paragraph.
I wasn't around when I was in school.
I know, I, you, you had to go.
You had to go.
And the PE waiver sometimes is, I don't know, it's six or one and a half dozen.
If we're gonna err on the side of parental input, we better leave a PE waiver in there, it is not a graduation requirement, that, the hope is, hope is, you know.
Mr. Gibbs.
But there's ways, you know, if, if parents, you know, you can take that through virtual school, you know, to be flexible, but.
Well, and some of our students, I mean, my daughter's a perfect example, she, she plays softball but outside of the school, and so kids getting a lot of physical activity, but may not want to come into the school and do PE at the school, so.
Right.
That's why those waivers are, are useful.
Maybe we make them play a sport would be a waiver.
Trying.
It says here that we, in some of that, it says that there's a physician that needs to be involved, are we allowing that to be the level?
Uh, no, right, well, I don't, right now, it's just the parent has to, the parent signs it.
A physician involved, where are you reading that at?
It says, makes, okay, after, so you go first whole section, right, sec, page two, and there says provision shall be made to, at all levels to excuse individual students from specific activity, if the directions do so, in the writing from the student's physician.
So a doctor's note.
That's optional.
Yeah, optional.
Yeah.
I'm gonna listen, I, I think there's some kids that could use physical education, but then again, you're right, because what they'll do is they'll just take it online, and then we lose that FTE, I guess, you know what I mean?
Uh, well, not, sir, I mean, a lot of time, like, you know, I've had my kids take Hope Online so they can get another elective in.
Yeah, that's true too, that's a good point, yeah, I think allowing the parents to make that decision.
I think allowing the parents, I don't think you need to bog a physician down with needing a doctor's note to, to not participate in PE, if a parent says a student's not able to participate for some reason, you should take their word for it and honor that, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
Ms. Campbell makes a great point.
So, we won't say student's physician, we'll say student's parent or guardian?
Yep. We good with that, Paul?
Yep.
Alright.
Alright, so these policies get. Alright, class size.
Twenty-three twelve.
Which. Do we have a class size policy somewhere else?
Regulated by state for class size.
I know, but I'm just.
This is us saying you want more.
I just looked, I, we don't have one that specifically says class size, no.
This is, we already do this, I just don't know if we're required to have it in, in policy.
I think, I would stay away from this one.
Yeah.
I would stay away from this one.
Yeah, I think it's a terrible idea.
I think so too.
It's unrealistic.
Paul, just make sure that we don't have to have this thing, and I think we're good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we follow statute, so.
Yeah, I think we're okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree with you a hundred percent. Alright, twenty-three thirty, homework.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Here we go.
Here we go.
This is gonna be such a good reminder, I'm excited to talk about it.
Twenty minutes a day, each class.
Linda Buffum has me come in and, and teach the last night of the Teacher Leadership Academy, which I just did last week, fantastic, and this is the policy I use for a group discussion, I show them how to find our policies and when we're updated, but then I pull this one in and I say, okay, because it's kind of short, and it's relevant to them, because they're all teachers, say, take this policy, she puts them in breakout rooms, and they, I hope they're watching this meeting, because one of their assignments is they have to watch a meeting. Because I'm, I told them, I'm gonna bring your input to when we talk about this policy, I put a break, do a breakout room, how does this apply to you in your classroom, and bring it back, so there was a lot, we actually had some good discussions, so if you don't mind me taking just a few minutes, I'll walk you through.
Love to hear it.
So one of the things, you know, the first comment was that it's vague, and I did explain to them, look, a lot of times our policies are vague purposefully, because then you as the teacher in the classroom can be more specific, we're not prescribing out, being, micromanaging how you do homework. But they, they did have this question, what does recent research say about the effectiveness of homework, is it valuable, what about kids with little home support? There was one in letter E, it said, as a valuation, excuse me, as a valid educational tool, homework should be assigned with clear direction and its product carefully evaluated, they, they really thought that was important, that the product should be, that that was a good thing. That we have a bigger focus on homework in elementary, and in middle, it's more about completing their classwork if they didn't finish it at home or review, and that we could maybe use this policy similar to what we, the requests we've had on other policies, to differentiate maybe what we say about elementary versus secondary, because, you know, they do function differently. And so maybe to break down the differences more between elementary, middle school, high school. Where it's less important for, you know, parents don't really have to help, you know, and, and the higher up we go, the, the less some parents may be able to help. Even me pulling back those Algebra One, because, which I'm doing Algebra One for the fourth time now, so, you know, but anyway, just, just wanted to make sure I shared that input when we look at this.
I, I think that's great feedback, I think we should remove the line where it says it should never be used as a punitive measure, because there are times when kids are acting up in class and work can't be done, and homework gets assigned, and maybe that is not necessarily a punishment, but it is to some degree, so I think I would strike that from there.
Yeah, sometimes that can be a learning purpose.
Yeah, I think the idea there is not, you didn't, well, because obviously, if you didn't finish your homework in class, your, your class worked in class and you got to finish it at home, but punitive is like, okay, you guys got in trouble, so you have to go home tonight and write, I will not.
I love that.
Da-da-da for a hundred times, I, I'm.
So, I mean, for me, I would say, I think it's something that you can put in a teacher's toolbox to be able to use to possibly help, maybe they can earn not having homework.
I wholeheartedly disagree, not all of our students are going home to stable families, some of them are going to daycare till seven, eight o'clock at night. It absolutely should be not, there, there should never be a negative connotation intentionally surrounding your educational experience intentionally, there are plenty of other consequences we can assign students, that is not beneficial, that will not help them learn more, that will absolutely not change their behavior, there is no research to prove that it would, and it is disproportionately going to affect our students who are oftentimes the ones who are struggling the most with attention or. And it is disproportionately going to affect our students who are oftentimes the ones who are struggling the most with attention or behavior. I don't, I don't think that should be at all taken out.
I think teachers would know the difference if a student is, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying it's, in practice, it's good for it to be there. Uh, teachers know how to give that class extra homework and say, it's not punitive. Uh, but they'll, that's fine. I, I mean, they'll, they'll get it across that they're actually just doing more work.
Keep the policy the same, but they still just do it without that?
For exact reason, you're, you're gonna have people saying you're, you're giving math homework because of a punishment, uh.
My, my son already says that, and it's not, but I mean, but, but to actually intentionally giving it as a punishment, that's, I don't.
Right, so.
The problem is sometimes in the classroom and at homework, the reason is, is that many teachers give it, um, just because they want busy work. And that's where this homework thing started getting hit with, we don't need so much homework at home, right? But there is some balance to having some work done at home, some work done in the classroom and stuff like that. I agree with you. I mean, I could have done it too. I mean, you just sort of assign extra work, so.
So leave it like it is.
Yep.
I lose this one. That's okay.
All right, moving on. Twenty-two, twenty-three thirty, we're moving on to twenty-three forty, field trips and other travel. We're getting slap happy. We only have twelve minutes, you guys. We'll get out of here.
So we only gotta go through thirty-five more policies in twelve minutes, aren't we?
Yep, and then we'll just carry on to the.
So a question before we, because we, we were, our next workshop was May fifth and that got canceled. So are we just gonna kind of hold these to make one of those extra Tuesdays we're putting in there, huh?
Do them tonight.
No, 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 no.
It's what we said we would do. We're on like the two thousands right now.
There's literally no need.
Hang on, Ms. Ms. Jenkins, just hang on just a second. Like, we literally only have a couple more to go.
I'm gonna take a point of privilege and tell you that my fourteen-year-old is gonna be at home tonight by himself until I get home. And I anticipate tonight might be a little bit long anyway, so I would suggest that we're, again, not in a rush. We're doing the process. We're going through the, we're going through there. But this, this kind of right here, what we're doing right now is a workshop type feel time. Let's take our time. Let's not feel rushed. I, I strongly would suggest that we, we have all those Tuesdays that we've specifically set aside to do this work. I would be more prepared myself to pick up some of these that I missed. Um, I, I do not want to try to rush through to get this done at the end of a board meeting.
Okay, so if, if you guys notice, we said we needed to review the policies, right? We're on two, we're on, Ms. Campbell, if you can just let me finish. So if we, if we are, if we are gonna complete these, we are now on the two thousands. We started this process in January, and one of the issues we have is, is we always run into these situations. So what I would propose is we start at nine o'clock then, and we get these things banged out during the day. Because we, at this pace, we will not get these done until, if we go at this pace, and we started in January and now we're doing them now, what is it, May? And we're only on the two thousands, we won't have them done before Christmas. And the, and I have an issue with that, like I really do. So, um, I mean.
Let's keep powering through what we're doing right now. I mean, I think we, we do need to honor Ms. Campbell and the fact that she is a mother and she has a child at home alone. I, by all means, we don't want to keep you from your responsibility there. Um, I hear you a hundred percent. So, uh, let's keep going and let's see how far we get for right now.
All right, we got nine minutes. Um, field trips and other student travel. It is twenty-three forty.
Yeah, this one needs to be updated. This one speaks to the fact of an area superintendent approving all trips within the state for one to two days, which we don't, we no longer have area superintendents.
Right, but the actual policy is reflective of.
Mr. Susan, this is one on our radar that needs to be fixed.
Okay.
So do you want to take this one and fix it and bring it back to us with the Neola updates that pertain to it?
We will work on it.
Beautiful. You gonna bring that back in the next two months? So we can get all of our policies done?
Or two or three.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, twenty-three seventy. Let's see here, make sure we don't have twenty-three seventy, educational options. I had here just to check the statutes.
This one needs a, a lot of updating.
Yep. Well, if you look at the updates that are on, um, Neola, there's a couple of, that are there. There's a couple of options that we can choose there at the bottom. So if you guys will take, go to twenty-three seventy and go down to the first, the bottom part of the first page, participation, and then it gives us a couple of options to take a look at. And like our, our maximum of credits is a little bit different than what, um, many other school districts are.
Yeah, they are.
All right.
So, I mean, we award letter grades and this, this option one is talking about that will be evaluated on pass or fail. Letter grades shall not be awarded.
This one, I think, I'll be honest with you guys, there's some of these, um, blanks that this, the, our district's gonna fill in anyway. What I would like to suggest is to allow them to take a look at this and come back with it, because they're gonna make those suggestions based on what our other policies are. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
With the performance being evaluated past, like all of that needs to go through there. Are you okay with that, Ms. Campbell, asking staff? This is one of those that's kind of, we're out of our league here, I think. If that's okay. Everybody else good on that?
I'm fine with that.
All right. Twenty-three seventy-one.
So they have a twenty-three seventy point oh one, which is virtual instruction.
We do need that.
And it's new, but based on the statute of laws.
We need that.
Um, it'll.
Yeah.
We don't want to go too fast though, because that graduation requirement, that's already passed, where the online course requirement has been removed. So let's maybe wait until the new packet comes out on this one.
Okay. Yeah, cause we're moving forward with stuff that's not even in there anyway. Okay. All ready? Bring that one back.
So, but we don't, so what, we currently don't have this policy. So we're saying.
Wait until, I mean, we can say implement it plus that checkbox, because we have a district run one, um, until the update, if we need to. But by the time we literally get it finished through the process, it'll be like a month and then the new ones will come out.
Right, the new ones will be out. Well, I mean, this isn't gonna take a priority, so I would, I mean, I would say put it in the box of things that needs to be done, but it's not.
We can check the box and say it's been reviewed still, even though we haven't revised it yet. Or well, in this case, we're not, all right, we don't have this.
So we don't have a box to check.
Yeah, this can go at the end of the line.
This one needs to be.
Cause we're doing it.
We are going to create it, right.
All right, if you guys go on to twenty-three seventy-one, you got V, version one, and I think version two. You have two different versions here.
So we did this in twenty-twenty when this came with the updates.
Seems to me that there's been some updates.
As a new policy in twenty-twenty.
Mm-hmm. It seems that ours follows version two pretty well. Oh, maybe not.
I think it's version one, maybe, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Seems like we've got some more stuff in there.
Yeah, this is version one. It's like version one to the T, it looks like.
All right, are we okay? Why can it not open up my damn thing?
Yeah, I'm okay with this one. I think, um, it's good to remind people that the Hope Scholarship, the, the last part of this policy, because a lot of families don't realize that they get the Hope Scholarship for one year. I've had, I've had parents reach out to me and they're like, I don't know if I'm gonna have it anymore. Uh, but that it remains in place until the student graduates from high school. So just reminding people of that.
So we're okay with taking the updated Neola version one?
It's the same.
It is the same.
Is it identical?
I mean, we have numbers and they have letters. That's really the only difference.
Okay.
It's a blend between the two, basically.
Which what?
It's a little bit of a blend between the two.
The next one should be easy. We literally, this board adopted this in December.
It's, yeah, it's the same. School Health Services, yeah, this one.
You don't want to change it a little bit?
We can skip it. Skip it a little bit. We did this one already.
All right, twenty-four eleven, guidance and counseling.
This one's gonna.
Hang on, I have to open up new, um, have I only opened? The first batch.
So this is virtually the same with the exception, the second part, the second section, we don't have one of the options. Be the responsibility of the classroom teacher who may draw upon the services and, so I'm not sure.
That, that part that we don't have is a program of guidance or counseling shall be offered to all students and shall be the responsibility of the classroom teacher. In some ways, they're kind of doing that with the mental health training, but I think that's a lot to put on them, uh, responsibility.
Yeah, I'm okay with leaving that out too.
Policy.
Okay.
Yep.
So.
And this is an old Neola policy also, so they didn't, they didn't really have any updates.
Ours is good. I mean, ours is actually better. So we establish a referral system which utilizes all the aid the schools and community offer, yeah.
We, they don't have a twenty-four eleven point oh one.
Yeah.
The only difference there. So we're okay on that one?
I'm okay on this one.
Keeping out that, so Paul, keeping it pretty much the same, right?
Yep.
Okay.
They do not have a twenty-four eleven point oh one, college and career readiness assessment.
I like it. We'll keep what we have. If you guys want to put in there anything about workforce, that's what my notes said, anything about trades. Talks about college career readiness, instruction through regular school programs prior to high school graduation, college career readiness. As long as you feel that that says, you know what I mean, that there's, um.
We still, we still do that, right? College career readiness assessment.
Oh, yeah.
Um, the number on B, number two, it says Florida Virtual School may be used to provide the college career instruction. We, um, I mean, I don't know, I'm, cause I, we, we have BBS.
I would say, let's not, let's.
Career and decision-making course, and students are allowed to substitute that with virtual school if they choose.
Can we make it to where they're not allowed to go to Florida Virtual School and they have to go to ours?
No.
Just put it in.
Provide virtual school the course, and many of our students do it. Um, state law is pretty specific on the virtual options.
Mine is taking it right now through Brevard Virtual School.
How about?
You missed Campbell. Shout out to BBS.
How about we take out the Florida piece and just put virtual school may be used? Is that better?
Roger that.
Okay, we're good there, Paul?
We're gonna make that one change. We're gonna make, go through the whole policy so we can make that one change.
Well.
Well, I know, I'm, I hear ya.
Okay.
I, you know, I'm just gonna, I don't know, anybody's watching, cause we've been so boring for the last little bit. But I just have to say, people need to understand, Brevard Virtual, you can do everything with the Brevard Virtual just about as you can do with Florida Virtual School. Unless there's just a course that we don't offer, but all the courses, most of the courses your kids are gonna take, you can do through Brevard Virtual School. Keep it local.
All right, twenty-four twelve, we've got homebound instructional program. Um, we have, it's pretty much identical.
Identical. There's a line in here. I have a question. I understand why it's in there, being someone who had to teach hospital homebound. But I just want to make sure that we're still legal by having it in there, um, the part that we have the right to schedule the time and place. I totally understand why it's in there, but, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're still.
Yeah.
Allowed to do that.
I taught homebound also. It's a great opportunity. All right, we're good to go there?
Yeah.
All right, so what we'll do is, is it's four-thirty. If we can earmark and say twenty-four sixteen. And then you guys feel okay that if.
Fifteen, because Neola has a twenty-four fifteen.
Oh, dang it, Paul.
Dang it.
So you guys okay that if we move the, uh, school board meeting to a certain time, we can get a couple more in? Or do you guys want to cancel off and do them at the next workshop? It's up to you guys.
Sorry, say that again, move the school board.
If we have a school board meeting that literally gets done at seven o'clock. But it might not, cause we have, we have like an hour and a half of administratives, but.
Yeah, I mean, if.
I, I just, listen, I.
Seven o'clock, by all means, let's go.
Let's just do this. I understand that we don't want to go into the night, right?
Yeah.
But we've got to get these done.
I know.
So if we can kind of find a schedule that works in both, I'm okay with it, as I have been since the beginning, but I'd appreciate that. Is that cool?
Well, I didn't, I didn't know why we canceled May fifth.
Yeah, I wasn't.
Cause it's Cinco de Mayo.
Is that why it was canceled?
It's off to my daughter's birthday, but I mean, I was still willing to go in the morning. I mean, we're all going out for tacos instead of doing.
May fifth.
We're going in the morning too.
All right, we're good. Let's, let's gabble this and go.
Okay.
All right, good. Talk to you guys. There we go.